Good morning. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the zoning hearing for August 2, 2022. I'm wondering if Pastor Scott Rourke is in the audience? Don't see you. Okay. And I know a few people are coming in, but we will move on and get ready and get our meeting started. And we're gonna start. If you would please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance. To the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the principle with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And thank you all in the audience for joining us for today's hearing. To take us through the agenda, I'm gonna turn it over to... Oh, I was looking for John. He's not here. So, awesome. So, if you could walk us through our agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Board. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Board. Today's hearing will be conducted with the following process and procedures. Each case is called in numerical order. When the case is called, would the applicant please stand and raise their hand to show that you are here? Then, when we are going to call to see if there's anyone opposed to the case, we would ask that anyone opposed to the case, please stand, raise their hand, so you can be counted for the record. After recognizing the applicant and any opposition, the applicant and opposition will be asked to come forward to be sworn in, so they can present testimony to the board. The applicant will testify first, and then the opposition, if any, will testify second. Each side gets 10 minutes to state their case or concerns. There is not a rebuttal process, so please convey all your information to the board within your 10-minute period. Additionally, if more than one person wishes to speak on a case, we ask that you coordinate with each other about the points you are going to talk about, because each side only gets 10 minutes. You do not want to cover the same information twice. After both sides have their 10-minute presentation period, the board will start to discuss the case before them. They may call speakers to come back to the podium for additional comments or questions. After that, the board will render a decision to either approve, deny, hold, or continue the case at hand. There is one case on today's printed agenda which has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. That is case, that is special land use case SLUP 10 of 2022, TOPSC LLC. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. Additionally, Mr. Chair and Board, there's one case on the agenda in which the applicant is asking for the case to be withdrawn without prejudice. That would be rezoning case Z 34 of 2022, Rise Properties LLC. The applicant is asking that the case be withdrawn without prejudice, Mr. Chair and Board. The applicant is present. Representative is present.
Awesome. So, we need to vote on that. And that is in District 4. So, my call takes off.
Move to accept the request by the applicant to withdraw this Z 34 without prejudice as requested.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Belong. I'll call the question. That is passed by vote of 5 to 0 to withdraw case C 34 without prejudice.
There are four cases on today's printed agenda which has either been held or continued by staff or the board, and these cases will not be heard today. The first case is Z 7 of 2022 KM Homes. It's been continued by staff until the September 6, 2022 Planning Commission hearing, so Z 7 of 2022 will not be heard today. The next case is Z 46 of 2022 Watmore LLC, has been continued by staff until the September 6, 2022 Planning Commission hearing, so Z 46 of 2022 will not be heard today. Z 47, 2022 Angel Eyes Studios 5 Incorporated, has been continued by staff until the October 4, 2022 Planning Commission hearing, so Z 47 of 2022 will not be heard today. And finally, Z 49, 2022 Johnny Hastings Integrity Development Group, has been continued by staff until the September 6, 2022 Planning Commission hearing, so Z 49 will not be heard today. Additionally, Mr. Chair and Board, there is one additional item on the agenda which the applicant has asked for the case to be continued to the September 6 Planning Commission hearing, and that would be SLUP 5 of 2022 Parallel Towers 3 LLC, AKA Parallel Infrastructure, Inc. The applicant is asking that this case be continued, and the applicant is present? Yes, the applicant is present, Mr. Chair and Board.
Thank you, Ms. Peyton. That's, this is in District 3, so Commissioner Dance, I will ask for a motion from you.
Well, I might like to ask a couple of questions in advance. Is there opposition present?
Is there any opposition present for SLUP 5? It looks like there is one.
Okay, and so if, if, Mr. Chair, if it's appropriate, if we might hear from the applicant as to the request for continuance?
Yeah. Can we have the applicant for SLUP 5 come forward? No? Okay. You can approach the mic. No? You can approach the mic. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. If we could just have you present your request for continuance since it wasn't received at by the deadline. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. We're asking for continuance. We have been working with Citiescape, the county's consultant, in order to get information concerning the economics of the tower that is more specific than what we have been able to provide to date. We have been in touch with AT&amp;T, and I've, we don't have consent to disclose it yet, but we do have more specific economic information that we're working to get a non-disclosure agreement in place to be responsive to the request of the Planning Commission. And that is why we're requesting a continuance.
Okay, and counsel, can you, can you speak to the continuance and what's necessary for purposes of tolling your shot clock?
Well, if the, if the request for continuance is granted by the Planning Commission, the shot clock for the timeliness of application would need to be told for another 30 days until the next Planning Commission, which is September?
6.
September 6.
And I've submitted a letter confirming our request.
Okay, so you're in, you're in agreement with that additional 30 days?
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay. Did you want a motion on that separately?
No, just a motion.
On just on that item? Okay. So, I, I would... Does opposition have a position on this?
We have no opposition.
Okay. All right, thank you. Then I would move for a continuance of SLUP 5 contingent upon all the requirements of the tolling, the 30-day tolling period.
Second for purposes of discussion?
Okay. We have a second by Commissioner Belong. Let's open it for discussion.
Mr. Chair, just very briefly, just to confirm, you say you've already written a letter agreeing in advance to the continued tolling of the shot clock through the actual hearing date in September?
Yes, sir. I sent it on Friday.
Thank you.
Is there further discussion? If not, I'll call the question. That most, that most of our continuance is approved by vote of 5 to 0. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to ask people in today's audience to silence your cellphones. When phones ring, they do interfere with the broadcast presentation, so please put your phones on mute. Any person wishing to speak before the Board of Commissioners must file a campaign contribution disclosure statement if within two years immediately preceding the filing of a rezoning application, a campaign contribution totaling $250 or more has made, has been made to a current member of the Board of Commissioners. Additional information concerning this is on the table at the back of the room. I want to remind applicants, opposition, and interested parties that the information is due to the board on the Wednesday prior to this hearing. Any information submitted after the Wednesday due date may or may not be considered by the board at their discretion. And with that, Mr. Board, Mr. Chair and Board, I am ready to start the consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Peyton. Go for it.
The first case on consent is rezoning case Z 45 Joseph Duru. He's requesting a rezoning from NS to NRC for a professional office in Land Lot 202 of the 17th District, located on the east side of Sandtown Road, south of Wendy Hill Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval to NRC, I'm sorry, subject to the Planning Division. Staff recommends approval to NRC, subject to the site plan received by the zoning division dated May 24 of 2022. The installation of a 20-foot landscape buffer along all residentially zoned properties with the county arborist approving the final landscape plan. The fire department comments and recommendations. Stormwater management comments and recommendations. The Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Applicant owner or developer to install the six required parking spaces prior to any use of the property, and professional office use only. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to Z 45? Let the record show there is no one here opposed. Okay?
I apologize. I'm sorry. I requested that an additional condition be added to this application, specifically that the final site plan be approved by the district commissioner.
The next case on consent is Z 53 Learsea Development Partners LLC, requesting a rezoning from GC to R 15 for a single-family residence in Land Lot 1297 of the 19th District, located on the northwest side of Old Bankhead Highway, at the terminus of Ricky Lane, south of Veterans Memorial Highway. Staff recommends approval, subject to the district commissioner to approve the final site plan. The fire department comments and recommendations. Water and Sewer Division comments and recommendations. Stormwater Management Division comments and recommendations. Department of Transportation comments and recommendations, and adherence to the Mableton Parkway Veterans Memorial Design Guidelines. Is there anyone? Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Let the record show that the applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to Z 53 of 2022? Let the record show there is one person opposed.
I'd like to request this item be pulled for a regular hearing.
Okay. And the final case on consent is LUP 12. Maria Claudia Ortega is requesting a temporary land use permit for a daycare. It is a renewal of LUP 11 of 2020 in Land Lots 1949 and 1950 of the 16th District, located on the east side of Allgood Road, north of Camelia Drive. Staff recommends approval for 24 months, subject to the maximum of 20 children, to the maximum of four employees. No signs, no parking in the right-of-way, and the Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show it does not appear that the applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 12?
No.
Let the record show that there is no one opposed. And that completes the consent agenda, Mr. Chair and Board.
Thank you, Ms. Peyton. So, we have a consent agenda with one mission, which is Z 53. I'll entertain a motion.
I would move to approve, subject to Mr. Hughes' addition to Z 45.
Second. I have a second from Commissioner Hughes. Any discussion? If not, we'll call the question. That consent agenda is approved by vote of 5 to 0. Thank you.
Okay, moving to the held and continued agenda to be heard. First case is Z 35 Morrison Building and Investment LLC. They're requesting a rezoning from R 20 to NRC for commercial use in Land Lot 42 of the 18th District, located on the south side of Veterans Memorial Highway, north of Lee Road. Is the applicant present? Let the record show that the applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to Z 35?
One.
Let the record show there is one person opposed. Would all those who wish to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in?
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. How are you all doing today?
Great.
Good to see everyone here.
And if you could state your name for the record.
My name is Rodney Morrison.
Thank you. And go ahead.
Okay, well, I'm, I guess, I'm just here to get this thing, try to get it approved. I've sent over some things, and I think Mr. Hughes, hopefully Mr. Hughes, received everything. So, just basically here to try to get it approved.
Can you go over the highlights of the, of the case, like what you're, what you're trying to?
Well, we're basically rezoning from the, what she stated before, the residential to NRC for a daycare with 20, 20 kids or less. It's only a thousand-square-foot building. That's pretty much it. It's pretty simple. I have NRC on either side, and I guess GC on the other side, but it's basically, that whole street is, looks like eventually it's gonna be commercial. Not right now, but it looks like in the future, soon it'll all be commercial.
Awesome. Anything else you want to share?
No.
Okay. Okay, you have a seat, and we'll hear from the opposition. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Robin Meyer, and I'm the chairman of the zoning commission, committee, I'm sorry, you're the commission, I'm the committee, for the Mableton Improvement Coalition. It seems as if Mr. Morrison may have provided some additional information to you all, but we've not had any conversation with Mr. Morrison since the last hearing. So, we're working on the same information that's posted presently on the department's website. The, the last we understand, the site plan here requires a parking variance of almost 50%. The number of parking spaces required is 20, the number provided is 10. We think that generally parking variances should be looked at, you know, one by one. Sometimes they're, they're called for, but in this case, we're very concerned about it, because there is no alternative place to park. When these 10 spaces are filled up, there is no parking next door, there's no street parking. It will be full. Typically, daycare centers provide some sort of ability to circulate through the property. That's not possible here because the property is so small. We've heard different things as to the operating hours of this facility, whether it will be 24/7 or not, whether it'll have an after-school program or not, but in any of those cases, we can see situations where more than 10 parking spaces will be needed if the property is to serve the 18 or 19 children that are described. There is no landscaping plan for this property. We've seen some drawings related to the building, but nothing that improves the aesthetics of the site altogether. Until very recently, this has been used as a single-family home. We agree that one day it might be commercial, but if that changes to be made, it should be made based on a sound plan, and we don't believe that this is, that's kind of a sound plan. In fact, when Mr. Morrison pulled the building permit for this property, it's our understanding that it was a residential permit, not a commercial permit. So, initially, he too saw it as a residential property, apparently. It's a very small building. It's an old post-war bungalow. There's, it's a small site, although there does not appear to be sufficient impervious surface at this point that would require a detention pond. If the final site plan does get to that point, there would be no room for a detention pond on this property. Therefore, based on all of these issues, we ask that you recommend denial of this application. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, this one's, this case is in District 4, so I'm gonna turn it over to Commissioner Hughes to lead our discussion.
Thank you, Chairman Vaughn. If I can have the applicant come forward, please? Good morning, Mr. Harrison. I know you, you mentioned-
Morrison.
Morrison, excuse me, sir. You've provided some additional information with respect to floor plans. Can you kind of walk the commission through what your plans are for remodeling the structure itself?
Well, I'm not sure where, I've always, I purchased the property in order to make it commercial. I purchased it under my company's name, Morrison Building and Investments. It was always gonna be changed over to commercial. I, I originally, I originally was gonna turn it into an office for my company, but I wanted to use the highest and best use for the property. The zoning for the 10, the 10 parking spaces is the only, I think that's one of the only two or three variances that I asked for as for, as, as far as getting this thing approved. The, and I, and there is another, there's another daycare actually across the street, maybe down a little bit. It has, I counted the parking spaces. They have 21 parking spaces. They have a capacity of over 200 kids currently. So, I, I don't see where 10 parking spaces could even be anywhere near a problem. Aesthetically, we've remodeled the interior of the property already. We put an entrance, entrance whereas, which is the permit, we wanted to make sure we were going by everything by doing framing and different stuff on the interior of the home. We've changed all the windows in the property, all new windows instead of all the older windows. We're gonna change all the exterior siding, adding a deck, doing the buffer in the back. We've added a privacy fence all along the back of the property. We are completing that sometime within the, in the week or so. We're, if the zoning is approved, we're gonna go back in and apply for a commercial permit, of course, then complete the rest of the work. So...
You said you're gonna apply for a commercial permit?
Yes.
What sort of permit?
Well, currently, we have a residential permit, just to, you know, force framing and actually do work on the property. If it is rezoned, we have to, that, that initial permit would have to be taken out for its residential. Then we'll have to go back and pull a commercial permit. Yeah. Because they, well, I, I pull permits all the time. I do construction in Cobb County all the time. I've built my personal home in Cobb County, right up the street from this. I see we have one new person, new, that might not have heard these, some of these things, but I've, I've been in Cobb County for about six years, and I like it so far. I own another small business here, so I plan on continuing doing business in Cobb.
So, so it was alluded to earlier that, that you, you pulled a residential permit?
Yes, in order to start doing the fencing and the, somebody tearing out on the inside, because it was really old property. The property was, I mean, had some to ask, you know, just, just all kind of old things. We had, we demoed all the old sheet rock out of the inside of the property. It was a residential home, but it was, it was, I mean, the plumbing, the septic tank, all that stuff. Since then, we've sent over stuff to the public, public safety that we've pumped all the septic tank, got everything ready. And we've paid sewer, water and sewer to come out, which they haven't done yet, which they apologized and tell me they, it's been on, it's been on back, I think back, the, for about three months, that I paid for the water and sewer to be installed, and they haven't been out there yet. So, they got a, a lot to do in order to get that actually approved, so we're patiently waiting on that to get, get finished up as well, which is a sewer tap for the property.
So, the county needs to come to-
The county has, has to do the sewer tap. They have to actually run a sewer tap for the property, yeah.
So, the, the parking variance, I know you meant, it's been indicated that you're looking at a parking variance, 10 spaces?
10 spaces.
How many employees do you anticipate?
Well, we're really only gonna have about two to three employees at a time. It's-
So, the maximum number of spaces potentially available would be seven to eight?
Seven, eight.
Per day?
Yes, sir.
And talk to me a little bit about the operations?
It's 24 hours. I never, it's, I've always mentioned it was gonna be a 24-hour daycare. It's an after-school program. It's, we have three rooms, and each room has already been, you know, built out to how bright from the start would like it to be built out. We've had, we have an advisor doing that as well. So, everything, as soon as we're able to get this approval, everything else should fall right into place.
So, you mentioned after-school program. Does that mean you'll be bringing in children from other places for?
No, just like, just like after school, like, so, say, parents wanna drop, they can't set something to do after, they wanna go out doing dinner or something like that, after-school program, we have one classroom set up for an after-school program, which is normal for most childcare facilities, or they have an infant room, it's an infant room, a toddler room, and maybe an after-school, after-school room. And each room we designed for that.
So, you mentioned bright from the start. I know that's the state of Georgia's licensing-
Yes.
-entity. What's the status of your, your license, your application?
Well, we have to get it changed over to commercial first, and then we're able to submit the application.
Okay, that's all the questions I have at this point. Will my fellow commissioners have any questions of the applicant?
Questions for the applicant? Commissioner Belong?
Just briefly, you, you saw some of the comments from the MIC, Mableton Improvement Coalition. Do you have any other comments in response to that? I remember one was traffic.
Yes.
One was a specific concern about traffic. Would you like to address that?
Yeah, we addressed that with the DOT. The engineers that I have working on the project, they created the entrance to where it should be as far as DOT specs. We did, we addressed that last time we were here. The parking, the parking lot again, that would be the variance. We're adding in curbs. The landscaping plan will- The landscaping plan will be developed once we get everything together and get it submitted to the city. I mean, basically, whenever I do things in Cobb County, I do it by all the standards that Cobb County had. And not the minimum standard. I try to improve on that.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Dan?
Along those lines, part of their comments were about landscaping. What are your intentions as to landscaping?
Well, we're gonna do a 25-foot buffer. So, it's commercial on the, wherever you're facing the property. It's commercial on the left-hand side and it's commercial on the right. The rear of the property is residential. So, they require a 20-foot buffer in between the rear of the property with six-foot landscaping. It's already a six-foot privacy fence and we're gonna do 25 feet off with another fence with different shrubbery and trees planted to do the buffer in between the residential and the commercial property.
And I may have missed it, but I heard Mr. Hughes ask you about an internal layout. Do we have a copy of that? And do we have a copy of your landscape plan?
We sent it over to, well, we didn't, we sent some of it over to the building department, but we hadn't, we hadn't got it approved yet for as the interior, all the final drawings for the interior. Once we get all the improved drawings from Bright From the Start, I sent all over to, do we have, do you have that on where I could pull it up so I could show the drawings that we submitted?
It is attached on the civet clerk for your reference.
To ask his question, is it available to be pulled up so he could walk us through it?
Yes. Can you, are you able to do that?
Yeah, it was in the email that I sent over. I don't know if it's in there. Yeah, maybe that, that's fine, but, yeah.
It's a separate PDF.
So, basically, we're, you know, just refacing the entire property, making it look nicer for that area. I actually live in the area, so I wanna see something nice when I drive out to Veterans Memorial from Cooper Lake and see it over there.
Do you have a potential tenant?
No, ma'am. I will be the owner of the daycare.
Oh, you would, you would be operating the center?
Well, I have a director and assistant director, but I will be the actual owner. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, but you have already retained an assistant director and director? Is that right?
Yes, I do have. Potentially, just, I haven't did the background till, you know, I wanna make sure that... But these people have good references and they were referred by.
So, if you're looking at the schematic that's on the screen now, can you, can you tell us?
Well, we have an entrance, entrance way, which will, of course, have certain, all the, well, like I said, we were advised from somewhere from Bright From the Start. So, we have an entrance way with a blocked-off area, a hallway. This first classroom, I don't, kinda, it's kinda hard to, it's, again, it's a small footprint. So, the first classroom will be this one toward the front where you see the, and again, when I say front, it's where the circle is at the bottom of it. Come over a little bit there. This is the front. So, this would be the entrance way right here and of course, it'll be blocked off. You'll drop the kids off there. The parents won't go in unless it's absolutely necessary. And then you'll go into the classroom to the left. That'll be an infant and toddler room. And then you'll proceed through that to the toddler room as well. That's only infants. Infants can only be, and that would be a toddler room. All of the bathrooms are ADA compliant, but we've already designed. And there will be another after-school classroom over the front, back up to the front in this area behind the office area to the right. Yes, sir. There.
So, the actual classroom space is how many square feet?
The, well, a 12-by-12 room is 144 square feet. We have, I think one of the classrooms is 11 by 12, another classroom is like 10 by 10 by 12. And I think the other large after-school classroom is about 14 by like 13 or something like that, if I had to guess.
And so, the total square footage used for classrooms is how much? Do you know?
Not right offhand. Basically, we couldn't do any more than what they, 35 square foot per child from Bright From the Start is what they're allowing.
And so, how many children does the square footage equate to?
Right now, it's about 20 kids. And I'm, I want it small and personal. I'm actually building it for my own son. So, I enrolled him in a daycare already because we're not done yet. So, as soon as I'm able to get this thing up and running, try to bring him over.
Okay, and the landscaping that you described, is there a plan attached to these documents that deals with the landscaping?
No, it's not yet. We're gonna actually attach one, but there is already a, we have a six-foot privacy fence already across the back dividing the residential and commercial property.
And the parking and traffic configuration that you've described, is that attached as a document here?
Yeah, well, yes, ma'am. We have, we showed the 10 parking spaces and I think it's on another email.
Can we see the traffic configuration document?
Ma'am?
I was just asking if we can see the traffic configuration document? And your parking?
Yes, that's it.
So, can you tell us how the flow of traffic comes in and out of the?
Well, basically, you'll drive in, drop the kids off, either park, drop the kids off, and you'll pull back out. It's, this area here would only be allowed, the area that you see in the front where the entrance is, if you, well, from my perspective, is to the right. That will be only for a turnaround. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, if you can point it out to us.
So, here would be the entrance area. This area here would only be, well, we have to keep something for a turnaround for fire trucks, just in case they need to come in and turn around. So, the engineers created that for as a turnaround to make sure the fire trucks are able to come in and turn around. The 10 parking spaces will cover, you know, one or two employees. One of my potential employees, she's actually, we have two handicapped accessible, so she's able to park where she needs to park at.
So, is there a drive-by for drop-off?
Yes, there's just that, pretty much park, drop, go back and leave. No, it's not an actual turnaround as far as drop-off, no.
Okay, so the parking is adequate for staff and some drop-offs? Is that right? How many staff would there be?
Two, two or three at a time.
Staff members?
Yes, ma'am. You only need one for the infant and toddler room and one for the after-school program. But I'll, most likely, I'll have one, two, maybe three at a time. And not all of them. The assistant director, she doesn't even have a car, so... And again, like I said, I checked with the daycare across the street. Yeah, there's just some probing to see. And they have 200 and something kids and they're able to operate with 21 parking spaces, varies.
They're able to operate what?
With 21 parking spaces, varies. And they have a 200 and something kid capacity. She's almost full over there.
Okay, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Morrison, while you're there, I was looking at my notes from our last meeting last month and thought it was asked or requested that you provide a stipulation letter that included-
Yeah, it was an intent letter. I think you said an stipulation intent and that's what I took it as?
It was intent, not really stipulations. And by that, I mean, a site, approval of site plan subject to such a date, landscape plan dated a certain date, that type of information. Then you can attach the, your floor, your elevations is another condition.
Yeah, well, the elevation is on there. Yeah, that's on there, the elevation.
I'm not quite, and the reason I requested that was I think it's important for me as a west, my other commissioners to see in writing what conditions you're agreeing to or considering, agreeing to before we make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners.
Yeah, but that-
And I'm not quite, and I'm not quite there based on the information you provided to this point.
Well, under the zoning, NRC, all the stipulations that, it requires certain stipulations in that zoning itself, it has certain things that you have to comply to. So, everything, when we submit any landscaping plan, any driving plan, it all has to be approved through the county. So, anything that that NRC requires for us to do, it will already be submitted. We won't be able to open unless we actually submit everything to the city and do the plans accordingly to what they asked for. And we've already, in that pre-zoning hearing, they've already explained to me and expressed the things that they need in order for the initial, and which is the site plan and the drawings for the interior. So, we have everything that they need for the initial start. They will like a landscaping plan. We will provide that following this. So, I'm, you know, that's pretty much, that's pretty much it. I would love, because this has been four months. So, four months, no, so I would love for you guys to make a decision on it today.
And I guess what I'm saying is, I don't, I don't have enough information. I can't speak for the rest of my fellow planning commissioners here to make that recommendation at this point. So, I do think we need some details from you. And I get that there are minimum standards already in the NRC zoning category.
And you went, you went to school in California from, and I know there are a lot of other stuff that you all have to do as far as volcano, whatever it is. But anything here that we do, I mean, it's pretty much, you just base it off the codes. You gotta go by what the city allows you to do. And that's pretty much, anything under that zoning or under that requirement, you gotta submit plans that'll go along with what that says. So, I'm not sure of what your hesitation is. And I know that, I think that's your, that's one of your special, I mean, I kinda looked you up on Facebook, whatever that was, so...
Oh, you stalking me on Facebook?
No, I'm not stalking. I didn't ask for requests. I didn't request a friendship, anything, yeah.
I'm just kidding.
But, you know, anyway, I mean, basically, you have to do it with compliance with the NRC zoning. So, whatever, whatever, whatever we submit, it'll go along with that. And it's, it's-
And I'm quite sure it will. And I believe you when you say that. However, however, I think for me to have some comfort level that I have a better understanding of what you're going to do, what the structure's gonna look like, how circulation's, traffic circulation's gonna be handled on the site, what landscaping's gonna look like, what signage is gonna look like, I need to see some details from you. In a, in a letter, in a letter, and a zoning stipulation letter. If you need help with a format of what that looks like, I'm sure staff can help you provide some samples of what a zoning stipulation letter looks like.
Okay.
And you can prepare that.
Okay.
It's done routinely as part of a res zoning in this county.
All right. So, your questions were what the property's gonna look like? Is that, is that one of your questions? One of your stipulations, what it's gonna look like?
Well, I think the way you can handle that is, a couple of ways you can handle it. You're providing a site plan that'll be dated, I don't know.
Well, yeah, that's the site plan here.
It'll be zoned to that specific site plan. You're providing a landscape plan dated whatever the date of the site plan is. Here's what the structure's gonna look like. Here are examples of what the elevations of the structure's gonna look like dated so-and-so.
All that is on this email.
Put it in writing. Put it in writing. That's what-
No, 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 it's, I'm still, I'm sorry. I would love for a decision to be made on this. I mean, we, we've been going four months on this thing and it's, and it's, everything in the area is commercial, front and back.
I can make a recommendation, okay?
Yeah, we-
If that's what you-
I mean, you know, at this point, it'd be four months out, five months for something of this situation.
I understand your point.
And it seems to be, you know, a simple, seems to be a simple.
I recognize. Commissioner Anderson?
Just to provide some context, this is all super helpful information, but just maybe might be helpful to give a sense of why the stipulation letter matters and is important going forward. You have a very kind of specialized use here, a 24-hour daycare center that has variances requested and kind of frankly, a unique, somewhat unique configuration to accommodate some of the special dynamics around the area. Should that use change in the future? Should there be any need to, maybe the configuration, once you go through site plan review, doesn't quite work and you want to still maintain that use, but there are some other edits that need to be made? A stipulation letter allows us to take everything that's in a site survey, elevations, all these things that are kind of very technical documents and distill them into something simple.
Okay.
And it also, there are some areas within NRC that, you know, you are requesting a couple of variances. So, that by itself is, you know, a request to deviate to some extent from NRC.
Yeah.
So, I think it just is helpful, should, you know, this come back for some use in the future that might be different from what's contemplated or what might be feasible based on kind of as you go down the site plan review process. Having that stipulation letter is something which just helps us, and frankly, me. I'm a pretty technical person, but I, but I can get lost very easily too.
Okay.
So, that's, I think, the spirit of the recommendation there on a stipulation letter.
Okay.
And I just, maybe that provides a little bit more context about why it matters to have it in that format as opposed to a series of documents that have the bits and pieces, but not necessarily you speaking to them.
Okay, got it. I guess what I'll do is, like he said, I'm gonna have to reach out to somebody and learn how to, and figure out how to, you know, do that, that letter and bring it back to you guys.
So, you're willing to do that?
Sure.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, I'll do that, yeah.
I appreciate that, thank you.
But again, like I said, I'll figure it out how to do it and then I'll get it over.
There's some examples online, actually, if you go to any of the-
I did that this time.
Cases, and you can look at some of the cases and their actual samples of zoning stipulation letters on there that you can lift off of there, they're PDFs. You can look at them, use them as sort of a framework in terms of language and put something together.
Okay.
Okay.
All righty, I'll send it in.
All right, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
With that understanding of the applicant, I'd like to recommend that we hold this for 30 days.
Okay.
And allowing the applicant opportunity to put together a zoning stipulation letter that can be reviewed by the planning commission and staff. And that would be my motion.
Second?
I have a second from Commissioner Anderson. Is there a discussion? Not, I'll call the question. Okay, by vote of five to zero, we'll hold this for 30 days in anticipation of that stipulation letter. Thank you, Mr. Morrison.
Thank you, thank you.
Our next case is Z36, David Garnett, who's requesting a rezoning from R30 to R20 for a single-family subdivision in Land Lot 335 of the 20th District located on the west side of County Road at the terminus of Crestworth Lane. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone opposed to case Z36? Let the record show there are 15 people opposed. All those that wish to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Good morning.
Good morning, Ms. Chairman. How are you? For the record, my name's Garvis Sams. I'm with the law firm of Sams, Lark, and Huff here in the city of Marietta, and have the pleasure of representing Mr. David Garnett, his building company, and also his, his, his mother, Ms. Sheila Garnett. This property's actually in a trust, and Mr. Garnett is the, is the trustee of the Sheila Garnett Trust, and they're seated right here on, kind of sort of the front row. And, and I asked, I asked David to bring his mom because I figured she might be interested, number one. Number two, I thought it might be whether it's pertinent to your ultimate decision on the rezoning or not, this is a property that's been owned by this family in excess of 50 years. So these are not, these are not speculative builders and developers, and Mr. Garnett thankfully is in a position to help his mother professionally. Certainly knows after being his mom for low these many years, she deserves it. The property at issue in this case actually is, is interestingly positioned. You can, can see it here. This is a 5.63 acre tract of land. As you can see, it's located on the north side of Dallas Highway. It's, it's west of a property, sort of catty corner across Corner Road, which is, is zoned in the low-rise office classification, just directly across the street from the subject property, and then north of the, the LRO, you can see the, the R-20 OSC residential community development that, that I rezoned several years ago at a 1.56 unit per acre density. And that's either under construction or pretty nearly complete with, with construction. Dallas Highway, even though we don't have direct contiguity to it, does carry approximately 40,000 cars a day, so it's a busy arterial. I don't think because of our being repositioned, not repositioned, but positioned away from the road, helps the quiet enjoyment of, of this property. I'm concerned about the, the LRO in terms of what impact it, it may, it may have, and of course, that's a use, the LRO use is totally inconsistent with the future land use map, and we all kind of know the story of how that, that came to fruition. But nevertheless, it's entitled. It's there. It can be developed today as a low-rise office classification. This is an application where your county has, has recommended approval, your county professional staff. The original proposal was for a total of 10 lots, and what this particular exhibit here shows is the subject property has District 1 in the box, same positioning as, as the last exhibit you saw. But this also shows that this is an area in a future land use map that is VLDR, which allows densities up to, up to two units per acre. And the positioning of this property, as well as the, the other residential community going back towards the east, was primarily driven by the fact that this area is restricted to, to VLDR. This was heard and considered by you. My law partner, Parks Huff, made the presentation at the June 7th hearing where you held the application for potential revisions, meetings with, with neighbors, both revisions to the site plan and the stipulation letter, which we've accomplished. We submitted a revised stipulation letter on July 10, and, excuse me, July 19, and then followed that up with, the next day on July 20th, with architectural renderings and elevations. And you've seen the architectural renderings and elevations, but they were not formally introduced that day by, by Mr. Huff, but, but they now have been, and they are part of your record before you. This is simply an aerial photograph, sort of a reiteration of the other imagery you've seen, but it, but it, it shows the, the physical position of the property. And if you look to the west of it, some of the, the opposition or those interested have properties that are, that are to our west, and you can see those lots are relatively, relatively deep, deep lots. This is a GIS map. I know this seems repetitive, but it, but I want you to get an, an understanding of the context of development in which this property is, is situated. And it hasn't lain undeveloped because anyone's tried to market it. It's lain undeveloped because now is the time for the trust and, and Mr. Garnett, on behalf of the trust, his mom, to exercise his fiduciary duties to, to develop the property in, in order to ensure that, that the trust is sustained and funded, and, and thus Ms. Garnett is, as well. So with the revised site plan and stipulation letter, which you see here, we revised the site plan to reduce the number of lots to nine, which brings us at a 1.59 unit per acre density, which is commensurate, we think, with the previous rezoning at the 1.56 unit per acre density, which is further to the east. You'll also look at the northwest corner of the property. That contains our largest lot, which exceeds 30,000 square feet, also has a 20-foot landscape buffer along that as well for the entirety of the, of the setback. And, and, you know, I may probably get tired of hearing me say this, but, but it is true that typically residential zoning, unless it's multifamily to, to low density, but, but residential to residential don't typically require buffers. And of course, if Mr. Garnett and his mom wanted to develop the property as zoned under R-30, they wouldn't be required to do the, the buffer. But that's not what they, that's not what they want, obviously. That's the reason we've made the changes we have. Also, in order to follow your direction, as I recall, the district planning commissioner said, "We'd like to see a density that is more commensurate, more equal to what is already out there." And I'm sure the, the people here that are interested in opposition or whatever they want to express to you today, that, that they would probably articulate that they asked Mr. Garnett to either rezon this to an RR, which is a rural residential, which essentially is tantamount to an R-40 classification, or to leave it R-30. Instead, we chose to address the, the issues articulated by you and the direction given by you, and then those, of course, by the, the county's professional staff, which again is recommended approval. We submitted the stipulation letter on July the 20th, and to give you an idea, the price points of the homes are gonna be five and up, square footage, what you expect, about 2,000, 2,400 square feet. You've got architectural renderings and elevations in your package of information, gives you a good idea of what Mr. Garnett builds, how they'll look, and of course, we stipulated to this architectural style and, and composition as a part of the rezoning. And, and frankly, we're, we're willing, obviously, to, and we have different templates of this as well. There'll be a mandatory HOA, so everyone that buys in will have to have upkeep and maintenance responsibilities as an HOA for any common areas fencing, the perpetual landscaping and the irrigation of that. And we followed all DOT's recommendations with respect to the positioning of our point of ingress and egress. As you can see now, it is offset from the R-20 OSC subdivision. That's not a mistake. That's pursuant to specific direction from DOT in order to provide better stopping movements, in order to provide better site distance, and also in, in order to ultimately be in a position to be able to, and this is a new word to me, or phraseology to me, I hadn't heard this before, but a constructability viability letter for purposes of determining whether or not we need a, a left turn lane. We weren't reticent or fighting that, but evidently there's a process whereby, once you're going through plan review, you submit this constructability letter to determine if it can be built or not, or if the, or if the left turn lane is needed or not. I told Mr. Garnett, because he specifically asked, and I always think it's important to hear, not just from a builder who happens to be a developer, but this one happens to be the son of a, a scion of, of, of property in West Cobb County, and she's up to bat. It's her turn. And this is a reasonable request. It meets the future land use map. It meets staff's recommendation. It follows your specific direction, and so for all these reasons, we do, we do request that you approve this as presented today. This time, I'd like to introduce Mr. David Garnett. If you'll come forward and, let me swear to you.
Yep.
Be sworn in, okay.
Yep, 40 seconds.
Yes, sir. 38, say.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner, and, you know, this is just, literally, this is for the welfare of my mother, okay? She was diagnosed 60 years ago with a neuromuscular disease. She wasn't supposed to live more than two years. She had six more children. She has nine children. And literally, I am here representing the trust. There's a group who's under contract to buy this land contingent on the rezoning, and then I will develop it for them because they're not a development company. But I'm here trying to get the highest and best value for my mother, to provide for her care, honor her wishes to stay in her home. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll hear from the opposition.
Good morning. I'm David Parks. My wife and I, Glenda, own property that's adjacent to Z-36 at 185 Midway Road. We purchased that property back in 1999 based on the rural feel and our desire to raise horses and dogs and cats and whatnot, and we've been able to do that. We're surrounded by similar properties. To the north of us is a property that's five acres. To the south of us is a 6.5 acre property. We have 4.88 acres. Across Midway Road are houses and developments ranging anywhere from one acre to 17 acres. The zoning for most, for most of the property on Midway Road and around us is R-30, as is Z-36 at this current time. Of course, the property that it was zoned R-20 OSC, I believe it is, is across a road, which is a natural boundary, and seems to be a good place to stop the R-20 zoning for that particular part of the county. There are no properties adjacent to Z-36 that are zoned R-20. And while we realize development is inevitable, and we are not trying to stop the development, we're just trying to have the property developed as it is currently zoned because of the zoning in the, in the rest of the area. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good morning.
Morning. Hi, I'm Debbie Moser. I've spoken at the last meeting to the three, and I'd like to introduce myself to Ms. Stantz and Mr. Hughes. I, my property, I moved to my property on Midway Road in 1996, and I am directly adjacent to Z-36 property, and I have five acres at where I am. And I don't want to limit the building on Z-36 for the property, but I am in opposition to the rezoning of the property. Allowing R-20 will take away the choice of the rule setting chosen by the surrounding homeowners and other homes on large acreage in the immediate area as mentioned by Mr., Mr. Parks. I personally made two attempts to speak to Mr. Garvis Sams since the prior board meeting on 6/21/22. Once, I left contact information with Mr. Parks Huff, and the second time, my contact information was left via voicemail, and I did not receive a return call. Several of the homeowners, we did meet with Mr. Garnett on Friday, July 29th regarding the revised site plan, and we sincerely appreciated the opportunity to meet, to meet with him. But we, at the meeting, are all in agreement that we are still in opposition of the revised site plan that we have on the screen. We do agree that what was proposed in the new site plan for the largest lot on the northwest corner, as you can see, it's approximately 31, 802 square feet, which is the biggest lot, which is a difference between 7,465 square feet to 11,764 square feet for the remaining lots in the, in the site. So what we would like to propose is, we respectfully ask the planning board to consider equity for all the surrounding homeowners, including myself, which can be achieved by rezoning the property to RR with site plan specific lots of 31,802 or approximate. So it's equity for all the surrounding homeowners in the area. The transition would allow the surrounding rural residential area, which currently does not have sewer available, and it's our understanding that it will be, not be available in the near future due to the difficulty of the terrain in our area. We would, Mr. Garnett currently lives on approximately two acres in West Cobb, and we would wish to keep, keep the same lifestyle as Mr. Garnett has for himself. I respectfully appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Susan Heike. I live in Sweet Pygant Creek subdivision, which is about a mile up from Z-36. Over the years, we have opposed rezoning applications that we believe are out of character for our community and set a negative precedent for more units per acre in future development. On map one, the X represents Harrison Oaks, which is a precedent-setting development. Harrison Oaks or R was, Z-20 is a mile up from Z-36. These two rezoning requests share many similarities. Both are zoned R-30, but R-20 was requested by both applicants. Adjacent to and further out from Z-20 was R-30 and R-80 lots with acreage. This is the same scenario as Z-36. The Z-20 rezoning request was denied because it was out of character for the community. Bob Hovey, our planning commissioner at the time, appropriately said, "This board has a responsibility for a long-term view as to the use of land and the compatibility of that use for the future. If this property is rezoned as requested, it would not be in conformity with the properties around it." He further stated, "If we put a smaller lot subdivision in here, it's going to have a downward draft in those larger lot subdivisions around it." The builder ended up building R-30, and even though the economy was weak at the time, homes sold fairly quickly. This speaks to the commercial viability of R-30 lots. It is reasonable to assume that Z-36 can be developed as R-30 and still be a financial benefit to the applicant, especially since the property owner is the applicant." Map two. The yellow box on map two is Z-36. The entire remainder of the map, sorry, R-20 is outlined in red, sort of on the left. The entire remainder of the map is R-30 and one R-80, which illustrates the rural setting of this area, which is not unlike Z-20. In regard to units per acre, subdivisions along Four Lane Dallas Highway, Parkside Meadows, and Windsong Properties have 1.56 units per acre, yet Z-36, which sits on a two-lane cut-through, is still higher at 1.59 units per acre. Finally, if developed as R-20, it will negatively affect the value of the six adjacent properties with acreage. For the above reasons, we respectfully request that Z-36 be denied and the property be developed as rural residential or as zoned. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opposition? Okay. This is in zone one. So Commissioner Bologna, I'll turn to you for discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Garvis, if I could get you back up. Yes, sir. So I appreciate your meeting with some of the neighbors. Can you indicate for us which neighbors you've met with out there?
Mr. Garnett met with, with the neighbors.
Okay, and who were they, do you know?
Ms. Moser was one of them. I'd be glad to call him back up. He's under oath, and he can tell you.
Okay. Sure, just, can you provide the other name?
Yes, sir. Ms. Moser was there. Mr. and Mrs. Parks were there, and I'm sorry, I didn't get, the woman, the lady, just Susan Heike was, was there. didn't get, the woman, the lady, just Susan Heike was there, and two additional... Okay, Patty and Zack Pickens.
Okay, and the increase in the size of the lot to 31,802 square feet for the proposed lot six, who is that designed to accommodate?
That just, it was a factor of the land plan being in the corner. It was not intentionally made that much larger than the other lots. It was a factor of, with the cul-de-sac and minimum road frontage on a cul-de-sac and being in a corner, that that lot naturally got larger. It wasn't intentionally made larger to accommodate a specific homeowner.
Okay, and that same lot, that lot six shows no ARs planted all the way around in the 35-foot setback area?
Yes, sir. And that was based on, Mr. and Mrs. Parks weren't there at the last meeting. That was done to accommodate, there was a young lady, Camille, I can't remember her last name, to our north, that was at the last meeting, and then Ms. Mosher spoke at the last meeting. Mr. and Mrs. Parks, their name wasn't on the list from the last meeting, and I didn't remember them speaking specifically, but I did offer in that meeting to continue those plantings down on their property. Ms. Mosher is that northwest common property line that those are planted on. Mr. and Mrs. Parks are the next parcel south of there, and in the meeting with them, I did offer to continue those plantings down along their property line, and there was some concern that they said that, well, a homeowner could come in and potentially cut those down, and I did offer to put those on to their property if that were a concern, to alleviate that, not to take their property, but to put them just inside their property line if that were a concern.
Have any of the homeowners consented, adjoining homeowners consented to your proposed plan as revised here?
No, sir. I have not met with every neighboring homeowner, but the ones that I have met with, none of them consented. They said the only thing, only rezoning they would support was an RR.
At R-30, your understanding as to how many lots you could get?
I would be able to get six lots, and that's what I proposed to them, was that we're talking about a difference of three lots, but it does affect the valuation of the land. But, you know, I said that we would not have to doing these plantings if we take away the three lots, and they realized that that's the case, that none of those plantings would be required if we went to an R-30.
Have you considered a plan at all with seven lots? Do you have any understanding whether it'd be possible to do seven lots at R-30 with a variance, or would the district regulations prevent that?
I would have, it would exceed the maximum density. I don't think it's just a lot size variance. The 1.1 units maximum density, I'm not familiar if you could get a variance on the maximum density.
If anyone else has any other questions for the applicants?
Additional questions for applicants?
Anyone with additional questions for any of the opposition?
Ms. Dance, sir?
I actually had a question for the applicant. Sorry, I was trying to... So from lot five, and just kind of reading the topography of the site here, so I guess we're sloping down to the west, kind of southwest?
To the southwest corner is the low point of the lot, yes, sir.
Okay, got it. So from kind of, we're talking about what looks like 26 feet of elevation difference from kind of 1156 at the top, kind of contour line, all the way down to 1130, roughly, maybe like 20, 25 to 30 feet drop from the kind of top of the site down to the bottom, from the northeast of the site to the southwest.
To the very low point in the corner at the southwest side of the detention pond, yes, sir.
Okay, got it. And then, just helping us think through kind of the landscaping plan, do you kind of have a sense of, for the highest building shown here, what kind of the finished floor height would be and how that relates? I'm trying to get a sense of the landscaping, just...
Yes, sir. So the, so the, there's a contour around 1143. I don't know if the contours are labeled on there. It runs about through lot number three up into lot six, that contour line. If, on the site plan, if you go back to the site plan, there's a contour line that kind of runs through lot three and up into lot six, that that's kind of a level of about a cut-fill version that we would, that we've preliminary looked at with an engineer, where the sewer, I mean, the land would be kind of cut in at that point, and it would begin to slope more gradually up to the rear, and we would put dirt on the south side of that line to create mostly slab elevations on this site. We think the engineer felt pretty confident, we've had geotech testing done, that there's not rock in the area, and he was pretty confident that we'd be able to kind of flip the dirt, so to speak, at some level, and probably end up having to have like a small stem wall in the front of the homes, which would add additional cost, but it makes homes look more attractive from the road there, because they would look almost like they're on a crawl space or a basement in the front.
Okay.
Does that make sense, that that's what the dirt would be done to kind of balance that out, where it's not going to be as severe on the topography?
Okay, yeah, and I was just, I'm really just trying to get a sense of that visual kind of barrier, particularly on the west side. It almost seems as though this is kind of a little bit of a...
But I would anticipate by the time we're done, the bypass water that would have to be the off-site water, that water would have to stay kind of close in that building line area, the bypass water from the north side and the western side, the bypass detention. But it would almost be, lot five and six would definitely be slab lots, and the rear of lot six, the rear property line would be above the elevation of the first floor. So that screening, and at mature height, those holly bushes would almost block the entire rear of the home, because that home would be on a slab at a lower elevation, and then those grow 15 to 20 feet high at maturity and would almost screen the entire rear of the home.
Okay. Yeah, and just, if it's helpful for anybody in the future, one thing that is always helpful for me is to have kind of the finished floor, not the first floor, but the actual fully built-out elevation, just to, just so we can think about the landscaping plan, particularly when you do have kind of this dip in topography, and obviously, we're not going through site plan here, but thinking through the landscaping buffer and the visual screening that it provides, that would be something that would be helpful for me.
So all of those, seven and eight, all of those lots, the slabs would sit lower than the dirt is currently, so all of those elevations would drop. They're not going to be sticking up way out of the ground from a visual point from the rear, if that makes sense.
Got it. And then there would also be a landscaping buffer in addition on seven and eight?
There's no requirement of a landscaping buffer between residential districts, and so what we'd agreed to do was a planting of some holly bushes and evergreens that at maturity would offer a significant screening.
Okay. All right. That's helpful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions for applicant? All right, thank you.
Question for staff, please. I guess that falls on you today, apparently.
I am staff.
So I see they have 5.63 acres, and the district regulations suggested R-31.1. Is there a way possible to grant variances here, or avariance here on a lot to get them up to seven?
Yes.
Without changing this from R-30 to R-20?
Yes, those lot size variances would go through the Board of Commissioners.
As an OB item?
As an other business item, yes.
Okay, all right. If anyone else has any other questions, the staff? So my motion would be for denial of this application, provided, however, that if the applicant wishes to pursue another business item, to try to pursue seven lots with a variance, that they can do so that this denial is without prejudice as to that right.
Second?
I have a second from Commissioner Dance. Any discussion?
Only, only potential discussion is, just thinking out loud, does it make sense to see that seven lot version as opposed to having a denial with a carve-out? I'm only thinking around that is that if we're, for me, if we came back with the seven and then that triggered, there still seem to be some other issues and a whole set of new discussions. It almost feels as though seven, as it would require a whole reworking of the site plan, would probably introduce new constraints, which might make sense to kind of view wholesale. If the board feels as though that carve-out sufficiently allows us to reintroduce that discussion, that's great, but if we're open to at least having that as a seven and as a concept that can be carved out, my personal view would be to at least see the seven, and what are the kind of flow-through effects of that on the overall plan with regard to buffers and the need for various variances. That would be my only consideration.
Any comments to Commissioner Anderson? It seems like that would be...
Just briefly.
Go ahead.
My reason for doing that was, had more to do with the fact that there's a person who wishes to dispose of the property and is in a position of life where time, time might be short, and I didn't wish for there to be a one-year barrier on her proceeding with a further plan. Those are the reasons for that unusual condition, rather than serving as any kind of, if the denial was, if the recommendation for denial were approved by the board, I didn't wish for that to stand in the way of that possibility. I'm not suggesting here that it's a good idea or a bad idea. I just didn't wish to prohibit that activity.
And so then the Board of Commissioners would hear this, would be if the applicant desires to be able to hear that other business, correct? Any other discussion, questions?
May I ask a question for point of information, with your permission, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
I'm not sure how the other business application fits in to this. If he makes a motion to deny with directions that seven lots may be acceptable, then that gives us a basis for which to launch what we've got into, assuming Mr. Granat could take, his mom could take that hit. But my understanding is we seem to convert the existing zoning. I don't, I don't, I don't, I defer to legal, but I don't think another business application in the midst of an pending zoning application is, it seems odd and unnecessary.
We're all looking at you.
Well, I don't have a vote in this, but we'd much rather see a hold so y'all could take a look at the ramifications, what would happen, as opposed to, you know.
I would advise to keep focus onto the application before the planning commission right now and the request for the rezoning, and to not speculate as to subsequent modifications to any stipulations.
Commissioner Bollone?
Thank you. So is it my understanding that you're advising us not to suggest a way to go, but perhaps just simply make the recommendation for denial without prejudice?
Well, this planning commission has brought this aggression before it, but I would advise to provide a recommendation as to the request made, first and foremost, as to the rezoning request, and whether it's a denial, or deletion, or an approval.
Yeah, that's fine. Then I'll simply remove any suggestion as to an appropriate way to go in the future, and just simply make a motion for a denial, but without prejudice to the right of the applicant to otherwise develop the property within the R-30 context, within an R-30 context.
And that recommendation would be appropriate for the planning commission to consider?
Thank you.
So you, so there's an amended motion on the table. I'll have to entertain a second for that, amended motion.
Second.
Okay, second by Commissioner Dance. Any discussion on the amended motion? If not, I'll call the question. The motion is approved, or that denial would have voted five to zero. Sorry, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Our next case is Z-38, David Pearson Communities. They're requesting a rezoning from R-30 to R-15 OSC for a single-family subdivision in landlots eight and nine of the 18th District, and landlots 1251, 1266, 1267, 1268, 1269, 1322, 1323, 1324, and 1325 of the 19th District. They're located on the east and west side of Brown Road, north of Stout Parkway. Is the applicant present? And is there anyone here opposed to case Z-38? Let the record show there are seven people opposed. Could all those that wish to address the board please come forward to be sworn in?
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, planning commissioners. I'm Kevin Moore here on behalf of the applicant and the owner. In this application for rezoning, as some of you recall that we're here in July, this was presented in its initial hearing and ultimately held. If you'll recall, as a planning commission at that time, a motion was made to delete the application. This property is zoned R-30. The initial application was to rezone it to R-15 Open Space Community. It's a little over 190-acre tract with significant proposal for dedicated open space. At the conclusion of that hearing, you as a planning commission did make a motion. It was a motion to actually delete it to an R-20 OSC, which was consistent with the staff's recommendation and the second. Ultimately, that was withdrawn so that we as an applicant would have the opportunity to meet with some area residents. And we did have that meeting. We held that meeting on July 19th in the parking lot of the R-20 subdivision to our north on Brown Road. That was, in my mind, a successful meeting in the sense that we were able to have very good conversations and discussions. We were able to hear about some items of concern that we were able to address further in our stipulation letter, as well as ultimately, on our own accord, reduce our proposal from the initial R-15 Open Space Community. And now what is presented to you is a proposal and a request to rezone the property to a R-20 Open Space Community. And so that, from my standpoint, was successful. The initial application requested a maximum of 130 homes. That has now been reduced, as it would go along with the reduced category, to a maximum of 118 homes. If you look again at the, kind of the area-wide property map, and this is the zoning map from Cobb County, you see the massive piece of property, 190-plus acre, just over 190 acres, located there, highlighted in yellow. It's bisected by Brown Road, and then towards the bottom on the south end is this intersection with Stout Parkway. To the left, that large section of R-30 undeveloped property is actually Stout Park. That's a Cobb County public park, fantastic park that's located there. But what you'll see from, to your right, which is a major road to your right is Holloman Road. You have Brown Road in the middle, and then as you get to the far left, you have Brownsville Road, and then you'll have, then that's the county line as you get there. And what you see is dominated in that area is any development, residential development is done at R-20, is done at CS, which is a conservation subdivision, kind of a precursor to Open Space Community, or R-15. Predominantly, it's R-20 in that area. Predominantly, it's R20, uh, in that area when you have a development. Now, you have areas that have not been developed, uh, that are larger acreage, like the acreage we're sitting here, or larger acre R30-type tracts that have not been developed. A lot of that is due to the location and convenience of reaching sanitary sewer, uh, in this particular area. Uh, to answer one of the questions, yes, this property will be served by Cobb County Public and Sanitary Sewer. Uh, so that's what you see in terms of the development context in this area. Where property can reach sewer, it's been developed and rezoned to R20, and that has dominated the development in this area, which is perfectly understandable, uh, from, uh, this particular area and what you would want to see. Likewise, what we are bringing forth to you now, uh, is an R20, it's an R20 OSC, uh, development. Uh, and OSC, we think likewise is extremely appropriate, uh, given, uh, the amount of floodplain, uh, along Sweetwater Creek. And so we can turn to the site plan now, just so you can see. And that site plan, uh, due to the scale, uh, the, the problem we have with scale is that to take it to the next scale takes the site plan off a piece of paper, uh, because you're dealing with such a large tract. Uh, but you can see the large areas that, uh, of the property, uh, that would be provided for dedicated open space. In fact, that is just over 125 acres of dedicated open space out of the 190-acre tract. So somewhere just above 65% of the total tract size would be, uh, dedicated, uh, open space under your OSC, uh, requirements, uh, and therefore permanently protected from development and permanently protected, uh, from being located, uh, as part of somebody's lot and somebody's private property in somebody's lot, which is, uh, again, uh, a huge, uh, positive, uh, in terms of both environmental and stormwater protections. Uh, in addition to, um, uh, the reduction to an R20 OSC category and the reduction of the total number of proposed homes, uh, we entered into a number of, uh, additional stipulations that are reflected in our July 22nd letter, and I want to highlight those for you. Uh, first, uh, we agreed to, uh, a, a buffer and a section along the north, uh, as well as a buffer on a section along the south for adjoining, uh, adjoining residents. Those two buffers, uh, were requested by them and, and we were able to accommodate both buffers. Uh, both, one is a fully landscaped and fenced buffer and one is an undisturbed and fenced buffer. So that, those are two things that we were able to agree to. In addition, we have a rental restriction, a 10% rental restriction that was part of our covenants, uh, and enforced by the homeowners association, uh, which we believe is, and which has been expressed to us by the residents there, is a major, uh, a major, uh, component of concern for them. In addition, we have minimum square footage of, uh, minimum of 2,000 square feet from a zoning standpoint, uh, but we expect these homes to be 2,300, 2,500 and up, uh, in terms of what they will ultimately be. As I discussed before, we have full protection of the, of the floodplain areas as well as additional areas that would be contained within open space, dedicated and permanently conserved, um, forever. And that's a big deal. For this property to simply remain R30 and then be developed, it would be developed with floodplain in people's backyards. It would not be as protected as it can be under an OSC plan, which is exactly why we have OSC as a category. Also, we have included within these stipulations, um, to the extent that the county desires to obtain, uh, any portion, uh, of this, uh, open space area, uh, for either stormwater purposes or public park purposes. Because it adjoins Stout Park, can, county, if it's interested, can either have all or any portion of it that it might want to, uh, as part of that dedication as well, which could serve a community benefit if it was in the county's interest to do so. But what we want to do is ensure that that's not foreclosed as an option going forward. Uh, lastly, we also have provided, uh, for, uh, natural gas extension. Natural gas lines, uh, are not prevalent in this area. Uh, there's areas that are still have to be served by propane. So what we have agreed to do, uh, is extend the natural gas line to the extent allowed by the gas company, uh, to Stout Parkway so that it can be accessible, uh, to some of the area of residents along Stout Parkway where it's not available today. We also think that's a major, a major get, uh, and was expressed to us. Again, we think this proposal, um, fits, uh, from a, uh, consistency standpoint with other developments in the area. The R20 subdivisions that dominate the area, the R20 subdivision is our closest neighbor on all sides, is an R20 subdivision absent having individual R30 properties. Uh, in addition, uh, your staff comments and recommendations, even from the initial application, were to recommend approval at R20 OSC, uh, which is now what we have brought before you. Uh, these additional stipulations and conditions that we've included are there, uh, to address the concerns and the items that were brought forward in our meeting. Uh, leaving it simply as R30 accomplishes none of these items. And I think that's important, uh, in the context of how our conversations and discussions were with our neighbors, and we would like to have those in place, uh, and have what we consider to be a consistent subdivision in an area that has not seen new residential growth in its quite some time. Uh, this will bring some very good quality neighborhood and family environment to an area, uh, that continues to grow at a slower pace, but one, uh, that, that needs that injection of new residential development, uh, but in the context of appropriate densities, which this is, appropriate category, which this is, and with stipulations and conditions of zoning that actually go towards, uh, really addressing, uh, concerns or questions that have been brought forward as a result of our neighborhood meeting. Um, here, I can answer any questions that you may have, uh, but we bring this forward for your considerations, what we think is an excellent application, uh, and ask and respectfully request your recommendation of approval to the Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll head from the opposition.
Clint Thornton Rice Jr.
Good morning.
Um, HOA President, Browns Crossing subdivision that's directly up from the, um, the proposed development. Um, we have met with the, um, attorney. Um, there are some things that are in writing and there are some things that are not in writing, so it's, it's still a work in progress. Also with the board, can you turn this to the prepared here? Okay. This right here is Brown Road. This is what my subdivision is dealing with. Um, up here? Okay. The flooding is extensive when it does rain. Now, me talking about it is one thing, you actually physically seeing it is another thing. Our phase one, um, was totally flooded out where we had to get our neighbors out with boats. This is what we're dealing with. Um, in the, um, application that we see here, the applicant agrees to all Cobb County store one management requirements that are applicable. Now, um, I'd like to know did, uh, Cobb County Water Store Management, did they do a, did they do an impact study on the potential of what can happen? Because we don't want to have a subdivision be built and then turn around and we have issues and then we come to the county and say, okay, we need help, and then the county says, no, what, we can't help you, it's the act of God. Now, this has happened. Brookhaven is going through this right now. There was a news report on Brookhaven and the flooding that they experienced this weekend. The news report was on last night. Brookhaven says we can't do nothing for your neighbors. And the neighbors, their homes, basement, they're underwater. So what we're looking for is guarantees that in the new development does cause more flooding, what is the county going to put on record and in writing that is going to protect us? Also with the, um, the gas line, the extended gas line going down to Holloman, if it's not in writing, it has to be in writing. Everything needs to be in writing. It's the back part of my subdivision. As you see the bridge, the homes on the bottom on the right, those are the homes that were being flooded. Sweetwater Creek is right there adjacent to the back of that property. That water is going to come. So we need some protection and we need some protection in writing. If the board is intent on approving the R20, because a lot of the subdivisions are R20, most of the, most of the subdivisions are R20, so it's not saying that we're against, um, development. This is not a question of being against development. This is a question of, we have a water problem. It's more than, oh, we're just against development. We have a documented water problem. And if things aren't done the right way and writing for our protection, then we're going to hold the elected officials accountable.
Good morning. My name's Jerry Seagraves. I was here at the last meeting. I live on Brown Road on the west side, and about 15 years ago, that was all woods, solid woods. You couldn't hardly walk through there. And so they came in there and cut all those trees down, and since then, they made it a pasture. And water, when it rains hard, runs across my next-door neighbor's yard, which butts up to the current property they were wanting to develop. And there's a, it looks like a creek comes through his front yard, five or six foot wide, goes through my backyard to the corner of my lot, and this created a marsh out there. It's like a mosquito farm. And when they had cows there, they would go up to their knees in mud and they couldn't get through. So if they come in there and build houses, there won't be anything there to absorb any of that water. It's just going to accelerate all that runoff. I mean, on that backside, cause it's on the high point, it's going to all come down there at the back corner of where my lot. It'll be on their property mostly unless it backs up to mine, but it's just a, like I said, it's a water problem out there. And all that land they're developing is saying is for public use, it's just sugarcoating the fact that it's a floodplain, nobody can use it. Also, there's a, a lake on the east side, and I heard them say that they was, county was going to put sewage out there, but there's no sewage on that road at this time at all. And if they put those septic tanks in up there, that's probably what they'll do, and then change it to sewage sometime, what's that going to do to that lake? Because it's fed mostly by underground springs that run to it. I'm just going to keep it short today, cause there's other people wants to talk, but I could, I could talk here for 30 minutes, but I won't take up your time. Just please don't rezone this property, leave it R30.
Thank you. Other opposition?
My name's Edward Carter. Uh, I don't know if you can see it, but if you look at the right-hand corner of their proposed, of the property they have, if you follow Sweetwater Creek down to where it makes that sharp bend, that's my property down there. We have a major flooding problem and it's gotten worse with development. My family's lived on that property for over 100 years and paid taxes there for over 100 years. That whole area down there on the right-hand side is nothing but floodplain, and it's gotten worse and worse and worse with more development. The waters come up more and more. Every time it rains, my backyard gets flooded. I've lost about five acres of land that I can use because of flooding, and it's turned my property into a marsh. Um, it's created an oxbow in my backyard. And I don't know if you guys know what an oxbow is, but it's where the, the creek comes around and it makes an alternate route and comes and encroaches and leaves a little peninsula of land that you can't use. And that's what it's doing to my property. So the more y'all let this property get developed over here, the less property I'll have, right? And I know y'all probably don't care about my little piece of property, but I do. And just really, that's about all I got to say about this. You know, it's just, you can't just keep putting more and more houses in there. We gotta have a place for this water to go to that comes in. When that train intermodal yard put in down there, they, they pumped in, they brought in over 100 ton, no, it was 200 tons of dirt and filled in wetlands. That's where all the water used to go. It can't go there now because there's train tracks over there. So where's it going to go? It's going to keep backing up and it's going to keep ruining people's houses. And I want to know what the county's going to do to prevent that. You know? Let them build, but y'all better do something to protect us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the opposition? Okay, if not, this is in District Four, so Commissioner Hughes, I'll turn it to you to lead the discussion.
Thank you, Commissioner Vol, Chairman Vol. Um, if I could have, um, Stormwater, Carl Carver.
Carl Carver, Cobb County, Stormwater.
Good morning, Carl. Um, you've, you've heard the, the comments from the opposition with respect to, uh, their concerns about, about flooding in this particular area, and I think those concerns are well documented over time. Uh, the photograph that was shown, I don't, I'm not sure when that was dated, but in any event, um, as it relates to this particular, um, proposal and Stormwater, can you just share some of, some of the observations that, that staff have identified at this point? And then what are some of the mitigating factors that you think would be helpful, um, for a project like this?
Well, right now, the, the proposal is not showing any development within the floodplain. It's all in the open space. Um, they're going to have to bring up to standard the, the existing lake pond that's on the western side, uh, and they will be using that in conjunction with some other stuff probably to control their stormwater runoff from their development. And then that will release into the, the existing where it's draining now. Uh, on the western side, they're, they are proposing another stormwater pond that, that will control their release from their new development in, on the western side. So right now, they're not impacting the, the existing floodplain, uh, based on the layout that I've seen.
And that includes the most recent site plan?
Correct.
The R20 OSC?
Yeah. Uh, as part of the OSC, the, the floodplain, all of the floodplain has to be within the open space.
Okay. All right. Are there any other questions that commissioners might have of Carl while he's here?
Additional questions?
Okay.
No.
Sir, I, I did have a question, not, not you, Carl, I'm sorry, the opposition. The, the photograph that you showed with the flooding of Browns Road, what's the date
Date of that was '09.
So that was the...
If you want recent pictures, I can go, matter of fact, every time it rains, all I gotta do is go down to Sweetwater Creek.
No, I just wanted to...
Okay. On the, um, okay, I was gonna say, on the side that is the floodplain, the water goes over the banks. Um, as Roy Barnes used to have cows over there, the cows would be at the pasture, the flooded water would go over and it would go over into the pasture, but the cows would just go in the opposite direction. The cows are no longer there. But every time it rains hard, it does go over the banks. It's, it's very consistent.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, excuse me, one more thing. Um, with Stormwater, um, as they did their impact study, um, can I receive a copy of that? Cause our thing is, is that if you guys did the research and you're saying that it's not going to affect us, I, I need that in writing, because if it does affect us, we don't want to be able, say we're getting flooded out, that the county says, oh, well, it's the act of God. So we need that in writing, as they did the research, you know? Cause the impact study should be available to the, of the residents.
Thank you.
Carl, can you respond to that?
We don't do an impact study for individual zoning cases. At the time of their land disturbance permitting, they'll be required to provide hydrology studies for their development.
Okay. Thank you. Is there someone from sewer here? I think Tim Davidson, just...
Yeah, Tim Davidson, Cobb County Water System.
Tim, if you could, um, just high-level talk about, um, sewer connections in this location, um, it was mentioned perhaps the need for septic in this area. Is that, are you familiar, is that something that you foresee?
Could you repeat the question?
Well, the question is, it was suggested that... Well, the question is, it was suggested that sewer needs to be extended to the area. Is sewer available in the area?
Sewer is available by definition. It's the developer's responsibility to get to active sewer.
Got you.
And as a subdivision, the, he'll be required to get to sewer. And I believe the applicant mentioned they, they will be connecting to sewer.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that with staff. Thank you. If I can have the applicant come back up. So Kevin, just, just to, to, to go back to the meeting that you had with, with the community and so forth, there seemed to be three things that were addressed or discussed in that you've modified the stipulation letter to address. One, being the, the buffers on the north and south sides on the, of the, the site itself.
Correct.
Minimum square footage of the, the units will be roughly, what was the range, square footage?
We've provided it as a minimum of 2,000.
Okay. And then the limits on the percentage of rental units in the development itself will be limited to 10. There'll be mandatory HOA.
Correct.
Declaration of covenants that will be recorded.
Correct.
To include all those. Okay.
All of those items, that's correct.
All right. And then just to, just to mention again, sewer, the entire site will be served by sewer and that there will be no septic.
That's correct.
Okay.
By Cobb County, as Mr. Davidson explained, by Cobb County rule and regulation for the water system, sewer is considered available in the basin for this property. And we are required to connect to it in order to develop this, the property as a subdivision.
Okay. Those are all the questions that I have for the applicant or commissioners?
Yes. Commissioner Vol.
Yes, we've, we've heard about flooding concerns. Do you have any comments on those?
Sure. I have two comments. Yes, I recognize the picture from 2009 that was shown when there was severe flooding on Sweetwater Creek. Based on my knowledge, that was considered a 500 year plus storm, meaning it's a storm that would only happen statistically once every 500 years. And yes, there was major flooding along Sweetwater Creek, which is why you have major floodplain along Sweetwater Creek. So yes, the floodplain exists because sometimes Sweetwater Creek over, it comes out of its banks. That's why we have proposed over 125 acres of, of open space here that includes floodplain. Number two, from a stormwater standpoint, whether this property is developed as R-20 or R-30, the stormwater impacts the same. There's, it's minimal difference from a stormwater management standpoint between R-30 and R-20 development. The impervious coverage is the same. Just because you have a few more houses, it does not impact stormwater management or control. The same thing occurs. You have detention ponds, you have stormwater management. Here, what we're proposing is to retrofit both existing ponds on the east and the west side of this property to create stormwater management where none exist today in its natural state. In addition, we'll have, as, as Mr. Carver mentioned, other stormwater management detention ponds that will be installed and be a part of this project. In addition, current stormwater requirements now include, also include mandatory water quality and more importantly, include mandatory runoff reduction that must occur, which none of occurs today and which none of these other developments had to put in place for their stormwater management. So yes, I do have a response to that. Yes, there has been flooding in this area. But that doesn't mean that this 190 acre piece of property then needs to be set aside as, in its entirety as, as not to be developed. That's not what I think should happen from our standpoint. We think proper stormwater management is going to occur, is going to occur by really by virtue of this rezoning.
And what about the existing topo on the property? To what extent will mass grading be required?
You, well, number one, mass grading is not permitted under Cobb County's development regulations. Number two, again, over 65% of the 190 acres is, will be left untouched. So in this case, you're only talking about developing about 35% of the property, which is the flip of a normal OSC. Normally OSC is 35% open space and 65% developed. In addition, from the topoback topography of the property, you can see on the site plan where the two ponds are located that are existing and it slopes in those directions towards, towards that. And that's how, how we're going to manage our development and then have it again then be directed towards its natural flow from there, towards the floodplain areas. So...
Are most of the lots, are the pads that are going to go on them, I assume you're going to have cement, either pads or, or basements? One of the two, right?
Correct. These will, depending on this particular location, they'll either be basement or pad houses. Yes, correct.
All right. And to what extent do you understand grading will be required to, to achieve this lot yield?
I have not seen a grading plan, but it's a, this is a fairly straightforward piece of property from that standpoint. And so it doesn't contain extreme topography or elevation changes across it. It has some slopes as it goes towards the, the floodplain, as you can imagine. Falls away from the road, comes downhill from north to south along the road. And then, but then as you get towards the back, it falls back off to the, to the floodplain areas as you're, as you're viewing it. So it doesn't require for development, just based on my layman's eye, a, a ton of cut fill or, or major earth moving, just clearing of streets, right of ways and home pa, and, you know, the house locations.
And so it is your understanding, and we, we all know that 2009 or so, there was a major flood event here in much of the county. And, but it is your understanding that the banks of Sweetwater Creek do often flood when there's a significant rain event. It doesn't have to be a 100 year flood. It just, a significant rain can lead to flooding outside those banks.
That would be my understanding, which is the definition of a 100 year floodplain, which is what surrounds Sweetwater Creek. So that when that occurs, there's areas that have been designated by both FEMA and the county as floodplains. Meaning that's what it exists for, is to accommodate that, that additional water.
Okay, thank you.
That's correct. And in addition to that question though, I would like to note that whether this is developed under R-30 or R-20, the exact same amount of grading would be required to put in the streets and the, and the housing and the utilities. Precisely the same amount of grading. Thank you.
Thank you. Carl, can I have you come up for just one more minute?
I, I just want to give you an opportunity to, to respond to something the applicant just mentioned with respect to any material difference between an R-30 and R-20 OSC from a stormwater perspective. Do you, would you agree? What are your thoughts with respect to that?
Well, they, they both have the same impervious coverage requirements, 35%. And we, we require them to add into that impervious coverage, the roads and sidewalks, amenity areas and that kind of stuff. So a lot of those will still be the same. The, the design requirements for their detention systems is based on whatever zoning you choose, 35% for that lot. So their sizing criteria will either go up or down a little bit depending on the zoning category. But all their impervious coverage will be probably directed towards detention ponds or some areas may bypass a pond, but it is overcompensated for in the design of the pond. Gets very technical, but you know, that's, that's typical for residential subdivision.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions?
No, thank you, Carl.
All right. Well, I want to commend the, the applicant and, and the community for taking some time to get together to discuss the project. While it seems at least some of the items were, some of the items were addressed with respect to buffers, minimum square footages and limits on rental units in the development. I have some comfort in knowing, and I know there's still some concerns the community may have with respect to stormwater. But I also believe that staff have appropriately, are prepared to appropriately address those stormwater concerns and have noted obviously the development will not take place in the floodplain. And that the appropriate measures will be applied during the plan review process to make sure there are minimum impacts to the community. Furthermore, I think it's been suggested that, you know, there's not much material difference between the, the R-30 and the R-20 OSC from a stormwater perspective. And when I look at the surrounding zonings in the area, there's a preponderance of R-30 and R-20 in the area. Brown, the Brownsville crossing shop, Brownsville subdivision is just directly to the north of this site. The applicant will be retrofitting the, the ponds to handle the, the stormwater runoff. And only, again, only 35% of the site will be developed with the balance of it, the good majority of it remaining undisturbed. Based on that, I'm prepared to offer a motion to recommend approval of Z-38 based on staff's recommendations and findings in their zoning analysis along with the zoning stipulation letter from the applicant dated July 22, 2022. I would also ask and request that, a stipulation that the client for the representative, Ms. David Pearson Communities be prepared, be available for and, and attend the Board of Commissioners meeting in two weeks for, for that. And that would be my recommendation.
Not at this time, can't, sorry. We have a motion on the table.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a second from Commissioner Anderson. I'll open for discussion. Is there discussion? No. Okay. We'll call the question. Sorry. That is approved by a vote of three to zero with Commissioners Dance and Commissioner Vol in opposition. Thank you. We're going to take a 10 minute recess here and resume at 11:12. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, my name is Jonathan Conway from the Stonehenge Group. I'm the applicant in Z 42 relating to the property at 1350 Oak Ridge Road, Ostelle, Georgia 30168. We are requesting approval for a rezoning from N S T to F S T. We are requesting approval of density of 28 units on 5.7 acres, density of 4.9 units per acre. And we are requesting variances as listed, a reduced front setback from the required 50 feet to 35 feet along Blair Bridge Road, reduced side yard setback from the required 40 feet to 35 feet along the eastern property line, and reduced front yard setback interior to development from the required 25 feet to 15 feet. We no longer require the variance of eight units to attach. The reduced number of lots means that six units is perfectly acceptable. Yeah, could you pass them around? The current site is a, has a disused single-family residence currently in disrepair. It is a tree-filled property primarily used as a cut through to the neighborhood adjacent. And as often happens, it accumulates trash and disused fast food and alcohol packaging, et cetera. So we are confident that the development will provide an upgrade for the community. I've circulated the revised site plan, which shows the 28 townhome lots. Again, as recommended at the last planning commission, 28 lots on 5.7 acres gives us density of 4.9 units per acre. The revised layout eliminates an entrance to the property off Oak Ridge Road, so there is now a single entrance to the property off Blair Bridge Road. The site includes two parking spaces per unit for 56 resident spaces and 14 visitor parking spaces. The site also includes a pocket park to include a fire pit and seating area type arrangement. And as laid out, the property contains 2.35 acres of open space, 50% of the total acreage of the property. I've also circulated a list of stipulations. We spotted a typo in the list of stipulations, so apologies, but the corrected version is going to go up on the screen and I'll be happy to share at the end. So in terms of stipulations, zoning of the property shall be from NC Neighborhood Commercial to Fee Simple Townhomes, F S T. The total lot count shall not exceed 28 lots. All homes shall have the following minimum architectural requirements, carriage-style garage doors with decorative hardware, other embellishments shall be used on all homes. Each home shall have no less than a one-car garage, a typo there, it's a one-car garage. Roofing material on all homes shall be a three-tab architectural dimensional style asphalt shingles or metal as appropriate to the architectural style of each home as determined by the builder. The developer shall use a variety of techniques to avoid the monotonous appearance of identical homes. Such techniques may include different front elevations, different colors, architectural styles, building exteriors, et cetera. The exterior materials of all homes shall consist of brick, stone, cement-based lap siding, cement-based siding panels. Vinyl siding is prohibited, however, soffits may be finished in vinyl. The proposed townhomes shall have a minimum of 1,500 square feet of heated and cooled space. As discussed at the previous meeting, the developer shall establish an HOA and cause a declaration of covenants and restrictions to be recorded, ensuring the maintenance of all amenities and HOA common areas as applicable. The declaration of covenants of the HOA shall cap rental homes on the property at 20% of total ownership. The yard areas around each unit shall be fully sorted except for landscape areas maintained by the HOA. Street lighting shall be environmentally sensitive and decorative as allowed by the power provider. Entrance signage for the proposed community shall be ground-based monument-style signage and shall consist of brick, stone, stacked stone, or combinations thereof. The entrance landscaping shall be professionally designed, implemented, and maintained. Setbacks as discussed. All utilities servicing the residence shall be located underground. There will be a 10-foot landscape enhancement strip along Oak Ridge Road and Blair Ridge Road, which shall be heavily landscaped for the purposes of visual aesthetics. All landscaping referenced herein, including but not limited to the frontage area, entrance area, and open space area, shall be approved by the Cobb County Arboretum as part of the plan review process and incorporated into the overall landscape plan of the community. The detention facility shall be screened wooden fence or black vinyl-clad chain link fencing, a minimum of six feet in height with landscaping to the exterior of the fencing for the purposes of visual screening. Again, the landscaping shall be approved by the Cobb County Arboretum during the plan review process. All vegetation and landscaping surrounding the detention area shall be maintained by the HOA. The detention area shall comply in design and capacity requirements of Cobb County Stormwater Management. The community will apply with all Cobb County Stormwater Management requirements applicable to the property. And all setbacks, landscape, and buffer areas may be penetrated for purposes of access, utilities, and stormwater management, including but not limited to drainage and detention facilities, and any and all slopes or other required engineering features of the foregoing. Any disturbed area shall be restored with comparable plantings as allowed by Cobb County or any utility provider. So hopefully with the revised, with the revised site plan, 28 units per acre, 28 units, 4.9 units per acre, and the stipulations, hopefully we, I've been able to address some of the concerns raised at the meeting last month, but with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you. This is in District Four as well, so Commissioner Hughes, I'll turn it to you for to lead the discussion.
Thank you, Chairman Vault. I want to thank the applicant for taking the time to put together the revised site plan and as I requested, as well as the zoning stipulations, proposed zoning stipulations for the project as well. I guess my first question is, the streets, internal streets are still expected to be private streets.
Correct.
And the homeowners' association would be responsible for maintenance of those.
That is correct.
I do want to make sure it's understood that, well, not understood, but with just 28 units proposed, I'm sure these folks will be paying into an annual assessment that there's adequate coverage, financial coverage, to cover any sudden expenses that may be necessary.
Sure.
Not only with respect to the private streets, but also a stormwater management facility as well. So you think you, you think it would be adequate and you have enough units to adequately cover those expenses?
We feel we do, yes.
Okay. Looking at the zoning stipulation letter, I guess item number six, you have a 20% rental cap. I'd like you to consider 10% instead of 20%.
Okay.
That's, and
That's fine.
Stipulation 14, where you talk about, I think you mean screened
Yes.
Wooden fence.
No, that's right.
I wonder if we could eliminate the wooden fence and just go with the black vinyl-clad chain link.
I'll make that change.
Those are all my comments at the moment, and I'll defer to my fellow commissioners to see if they have any questions. I know staff has recommended approval of this, limiting the density to five units per acre, and so the applicant has done that.
Any additional questions for that? Commissioner Anderson.
Yeah, so just, would you have any opposition to having the final landscaping plan subject to district commissioner approval? The reason for that is because beyond just our wrist, just for heights and visible screening.
Of course, absolutely.
Excellent, great. And then just the restriction on, shall have not less than one-car garage. Are there any lots that you contemplate having more than one car?
Garage?
Yes, or is that?
No.
Okay.
It'll be one-car garage plus a driveway.
Okay.
Plus the visits parking spaces.
Okay. And just so I can understand, the, do you have a sense at this point of what would be a likely annual HOA budget per house?
I don't, I would need to put that together.
Okay.
But I'd be happy to do that and put that in the stipulations.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great, because I just have a little concern that it's not going to be for the maintenance of the pond and for the street infrastructure sufficient reserves, but certainly depends on. And final question, can you remind me again of the price point that's anticipated for these?
We anticipate in the upper 200,000 price point, 275 plus a similar neighborhood, similar product within the high twos.
High 200, okay. Got it, all right. Great, thank you.
Commissioner Dan.
Yeah, so just, would you have any opposition to having the final landscaping plan subject to District Commissioner approval? The reason for that is because beyond just our wrist, just for heights and visible screening.
Of course, absolutely.
Excellent, great. And then, just the restriction on, shall have not less than one-car garage. Are there any lots that you contemplate having more than one car?
Garage?
Yes, or is that?
No.
Okay.
It'll be one-car garage plus a driveway.
Okay.
Plus the visitor parking spaces.
Okay. And just so I can understand, the, do you have a sense at this point of what would be a likely annual HOA budget per house?
I don't, I would need to put that together.
Okay.
But I'd be happy to do that and put that in the stipulations.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great, because I just have a little concern that it's not going to be for the maintenance of the pond and for the street infrastructure, sufficient reserves.
Yeah.
But certainly depends on, and final question, can you remind me again of the price point that's anticipated for these?
We anticipate in the upper 200,000 price point, 275, plus a similar neighborhood, similar product was in the high 2s.
High 200, okay. Got it, all right. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Day.
Can you tell me how many, I heard you say one-car garage, how many bedrooms you have in these?
They will be primarily three-bedroom townhomes.
So your target market is what?
It will be, it will be young families starting out, it will be downsizers, it will be, again, townhomes serve people who are either starting out to get on the property market, or, again, downsizing from a bigger property. The location obviously is attractive to people who commute around Cobb County and to the city of Atlanta, so we envisage in this price point, a lot of young families, but also downsizing older adults.
So you believe that one-car garages are adequate for?
Plus the driveway, plus the driveway, yes, so two spaces per property.
Two spaces, okay.
56 residence parking spaces plus additional.
And how many guest parking spaces?
14 visitor parking spaces. We, 50% of the property is open space, we can add spaces as needed.
Right. Thanks.
Additional questions for that?
Okay. I don't think I have any other questions at this point, and I'm prepared to offer a recommendation, and we recommend approval of Z42, subject to the site plan dated June 13, 2022. And I'm, the copy of the zoning stipulation letter I have doesn't have a date on it, what's?
Yes.
What is the date?
I will date and sign, it was, my copy was dated 8/1, but I will sign and update.
Okay, so I'll reference zoning stipulation letter August 1, 2022, with the following changes to that. Stipulation 6, the percentage be adjusted from 20% to 10%.
Yep.
That stipulation 13, be modified to include the landscape plan will be approved not only by the County Arboretum, but the District Commissioner.
Yep.
And then stipulation 14, that detention facility shall be screened by black vinyl-clad chain-link fence. And then, sorry, going back to 3A, we just correct the typo, it says one-car.
Yes, will do.
That's my motion.
Second?
Commissioner Chairman, would there be a consideration to allow this for consent?
I'm open to that. Definitely, we can amend the motion to add.
Yeah, I'm, oh, we can open it, oh, I'm sorry, amend my motion to include adding this to consent.
Same with the second.
The second from Commissioner Belong, is there any discussion? No, let's call the question. And that motion is approved by vote of 5 to 0. Thank you.
Our next case is Z48, OM Enterprises 9 LLC, requesting a rezoning from LI to NRC for a convenience store with fuel sales in Lamont 302 of the 17th District. It's located on the west side of Benson Pool Road and on the north side of Benson Pool Circle, south of South Cobb Drive. The applicant's representative is present, is there anyone in opposition to Z48? Let the record show there is no one opposed.
Good morning.
Good morning again, Mr. Chairman, good to see you and the members of the planning commission. For the record, my name is Garvis Sams, I am an attorney here with the law firm Sams Larkin and Huff, and we have the privilege of representing OM 9 Enterprises in concerning this application, and my client, well, actually, his family is here today, so we have a lot of folks that can respond to any questions you have, plus from an engineering perspective, our engineer is available as well. The property at issue shown here, it's outlined in yellow, you can see it, but the purpose of this is the future land use map, to show you that, notwithstanding the fact it's zone light industrial, it's actually in an area that is designated as a neighborhood retail center, NAC, under your future land use map. To look a little more closely at the property, you can see that, and the gray shaded parts, these are all properties that are within the city of Smyrna. Under the HB49 IGA, there have been no oppositional remarks received from the city, even though we had the requisite contingency to collapse Benson Pool Road and go into the city, we really think it's more appropriate to stay in the county. So this property is a 1.131 acre tract of land, it's located, as you can see, on the west side of Benson Pool Road, and the north side of Benson Pool Circle, it is on the, on the records as being addressed 2338 Benson Pool Road. As I said, it's light industrial, it's a wooded lot, it is lane idle under this industrial classification, I think it was brought in, I stand to be corrected, in December 26, 1972, under the overall comprehensive zoning for the county. I can't find any other indicia that show why this property is zone light industrial, but it's not an industrial or industrial compatible or priority industrial area, so it certainly is not properly positioned for industrial utilization. And what OM Enterprises seeks is a rezoning, or downzoning if you will, from NI to NRC for the purposes of the construction development of a grocery-type convenience store with additional ample retail space. Our firm's been fortunate to locate what I'll call major prototypical convenience store developers, and I don't have to name them, because you know who I'm talking about. Basically, there's two of them that compete and do so rather well. So we've watched the prototypical floor plan of C-stores and associated retail go from, as I said, the prototypical 6,200-square-foot convenience store with fuel sales, to really a smaller and more grocery-oriented convenience store with either an equal or sometimes in these instances, more retail space. It seems to be more efficient, it accommodates the neighborhood better in terms of associated retail to go along with the groceries, which are not all pre-processed, some of them are vegetables, both frozen and fresh as well. Oftentimes, this new iteration of kind of a shopping center, convenience store, grocery store with fuel sales is a one-stop complementary to the, this area, and I'll tell you why, right now, there's a ton of rooftops. If you look to our north and west, we're surrounded by RM12 multifamily, high-density residential apartments. On the south, by residential high-rise, also apartments, multifamily, but much taller buildings. And across Benson Pool Road, from the property, as you can see on this GIS map, this is all within an area of the city of Smyrna that is general commercial, it's denominated as mixed-use, but it also has office distribution components as well. Again, this is the GIS map, which shows you the relative positioning in the context of development, and also in juxtaposition to the city limits, and of course, the multifamily that surrounds us and really dominates preponderance of this Benson Pool Road corridor. So we, of course, could establish contingency, but to what end? To none, actually, because we, what we propose meets with your comprehensive land use plan, your future land use map, and really embodies the policy of what your Board of Commissioners have established. We have sought out, we of course sent the letters as required to, there's a bunch of folks, I think it was 300 letters that went out, so we've had conversations, but there's no organized activist group like Malden Improvement Coalition or one of these people that, one of these groups that we can correspond and establish a dialogue with, but we talked to a bunch of folks, just simply because of the number of letters we sent out, we fielded those calls, initiated other area residence calls, and then also, my staff has talked with the business owners in that area as well to ensure we had no opposition. The proposal consists of one building, 4,000 square feet will be the grocery convenience store. This is the landscape plan, but it merely replicates the site plan, only it's purtier. Purtier. Prettier. South coming out the mouth. But anyway, you can also see that we've got architectural renderings and elevations. This gives you not just an idea, but we will stipulate as a condition of zoning, these elevation styles, both the technical ones and then the more, I guess, colored-up imagery that you see here. It's very, very, bear with it in terms of architectural style and composition, the property's large enough to be able to handle this, and, which is, which is good, because convenience stores with retail sales do have a certain amount of acreage that typically is required in order to establish not only what they need, but the interior maneuverability, because I've seen these things fail when they're hard to get, hard to get in and out of. So we stipulate the architectural style, the parking lighting will be maximal, subject to your regulations, the security lighting will be maximal on the buildings as well, the property will be served by strategically-positioned video surveillance that will be monitored. And there's difference in video surveillance that, you know, is only looked at if something happens, but this is actually monitored. And then, the other stipulations cover the typical things you'd see in terms of the positioning of the points of ingress and egress, the dumpster location and the likes. As far as DOT, they have asked that we provide dedicated turn lanes with respect to both the two entrances, but they have asked that the north point of ingress and egress be exit only, and we've agreed to that. Also in this one, with respect to left-turning lane capabilities or possibilities, they're asking for us, and again, this is new phraseology to me, to submit a constructed building memo during the plan review, so staff determined at that point about the necessity for a left-turn lane. We're not reticent about doing it, we're not, just, that seems to be the new methodology that DOT is using. Of course, as you come in, which, at either or both points, there'll be at least 50 feet, probably more, of uninterrupted space to the nearest improvement, that's for maneuverability, but it's a standard DOT, but we've got that and more. Of course, this also includes recommendations from the Cobb County water system that we tie into sewer, which, it's in the basin, we're required to do it, and we will. We simply ask that you follow your professional staff's recommendation for approval as refined by us with respect to the stipulation letter we submitted, and we also think, not trying to supplant your decision, but that this might be a candidate for the consent agenda as well. So that being said, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hughes, glad to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you so much.
Thanks, sir.
This is in District 4 again, so Commissioner Hughes, I'll let you lead our discussion.
Thank you, Chairman. Garvis, I'm just curious, does your client, do they operate other gas stations here?
Oh, yeah, we prefer to call them grocery-type convenience store with fuel sales and ancillary retail, but yes, he does. We just rezoned one in Kennesaw two months ago, and they've got another one on Greer Chapel Road, and I've entitled two others for them, they're not coming to mind right now, but yeah, this is their business, is what they do.
Okay.
And they do, and they do it well.
The one in Kennesaw, I'm just curious, do they typically put together a safety plan, like what's being imposed here?
No, no, as a matter of fact, it's not required, y'all don't require, Kennesaw, none of the jurisdictions require, but when I did the first out-of-the-shoot, purpose-built student housing deal about two years ago, under that new PBSH ordinance, it had requirement that you do a safety plan, coordinate with CCPD and other enforcement agencies. So I, since about the middle of last year, maybe the first part of last year, have started doing with any C-store-type or retail-type development that may be in a high-residential area, I do a safety plan, and I present it, it's, you know, I'm not trying to put this on us on other developers or, but if you read, if you listen to news every night in Seaford, Atlanta, and other jurisdictions, you know, they say, well, you know, we need to mandate surveillance, well, you think? So I think that the surveillance needs not only be mandated, but set in strategic locations and also monitored, but this takes it one step further. It doesn't allow the assemblage of people, it requires certain notifications, doesn't allow cars to be parked there that's not conducting business, and it provides us an obligation to coordinate with the Cobb County Police Department as to, as to what we're doing, and if this zoning is approved, this will be submitted, and I'll make the contacts with CCPD as we, as we've done in other instances.
Okay.
I'm sorry, along with answering your question.
No, 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 that's fine, actually, could you just take a few minutes just to kind of, high-level, go through the safety plan?
Be happy to. First, it deals with, it deals with onsite management, so there'll be a property manager there that has specific expertise in security and response management needs within this industry, and they have personnel that do that. There'll be after-hours information, phone numbers posted on the property if someone needs to get in touch with someone. The manager and onsite management team keeps a log of comments or complaints received, the date received, and the store's manager has that available, so I can either submit it to the county or CCPD on a regular basis, or whatever is the pleasure of you or the Board. All the employees of this sign an acknowledgement of these rules and regulations, and of course, the manager that has supervisory experience and is not simply just an employee stands in a position to either authorize or not. As far as security, there's 24-hour emergency on-call protocols that we've got, and as I've mentioned in the video, surveillance, parking lot fuel dispensers and all these will be maximally lighted. I mean, I know we can't exceed your ordinance with respect to illumination and wattage, but we want it to be as bright as it can be. As far as parking, that is, of course, applicable to your parking ratio requirements, and also non-compliant vehicles, vehicles for sale, vehicles that don't pertain to the business that aren't making deliveries or getting gas or groceries. We've got the authority under this plan to be able to institute the appropriate procedures for handling those type of things unilaterally. On page three, there's a number of things that we can't do. I could read all those, but
No, that's fine.
Lloyd, you can't gamble there, let's just put that, you can't gamble, you can't loiter, you can't, you can't poster hang materials that block the transparency of the playglass windows, all trash and recycles have to go in containers, no drug or drug paraphernalia, and I had to be careful, these I used to have, you can't have weaponry on the site, but, you know, I didn't address that because I frankly don't know that I understand the changing laws on that, so if you want to impose that, that's fine with us, but I don't want to run afoul of any constitutional prohibitions.
Sure. And the reason I had to do that is just, I'm sure like many, many of other folks in the audience, I see too the news reports with
Yeah.
related to crime occurring in some of the gas stations in metro Atlanta, so this is, I think, a helpful document to have.
It seems to me, not to put the onus on other attorneys or applicants, but it seems to give you another level of assurance than that you wouldn't otherwise have.
And just ballpark, what sort of capital investment are we talking about for this type of project? Just curious.
I don't know. Mr. Hughes, I can get Mr. Meta to come up here.
No, no.
I typically am not conversant with the contractual relations, although I've talked with the seller here, who happened to be a talked with the seller here, who happened to be a roommate of, of my girlfriend in college years and years ago. I just, isn't that weird how that works out? But, but as to operational costs, I don't know the contractual terms. Try to, try not to do that unless we're preparing the contract ourselves, so I can't say.
I understand.
But I can have that information for the BOC.
It doesn't matter at this point.
No problem.
I just thought you might have that off the tip of your tongue. Any other questions? No, I'm prepared to offer recommendations.
I had one.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Just one, one quick question I had, actually two. One was more, I think the site plan we have up here does not have the, a D cell lane shown, but I think that was a recommendation of, of DOT. Was that something that was removed after subsequent discussion? This is in the southern entrance?
Yes, sir. I'm, I'm referring back here.
Because it looks like it's just landscape sidewalk and...
We, we, before we did our stipulation letter, we got staff comments and recommendations from DOT, actually in written form after the applicant's meeting. So what we have, on page three, paragraph 10 of my July 6 letter, is everything that I think that DOT is, has suggested. If there's something amiss, then, then we'll certainly correct that.
I, I can, I can follow up quickly with DOT just to confirm that, and then add one question, just to confirm. There, there's a multifamily development just to the south of this, right?
Say that.
There's a multifamily that development adjacent, apartment development.
Northwest and south, yes, sir.
Okay. Has there, do you have any context on any existing conditions with the multifamily development? Any concerns that they've had around this plan in terms of coordination around information on safety?
Contacted, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, I was just asking if, I mean, there's a lot of information being collected as part of this safety plan. Seems that you're part, you're right at the entrance to multifamily development, so just wanted to see if there's been any discussions about coordination of that information?
Excellent point. And to Mr. Hughes's question, the one we just entitled in the city of Kennesaw was also at the interest of a multifamily development. So these are typically run by property management, third-party management companies, so we have talked with them. They are aware of it. And that's one of the calls that I got, because, because they received the, the thousand-foot letter. So I've contacted the apartments and the RHR. The apartments were built in 1965. I anticipate that you're going to see some sort of retrofitting and rehabbing, if not a total repurposing of that site sometime. But, but right now, the rooftops, and we love it.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner.
And then Commissioner Belong.
Thank you. Appreciate the, the plan showing the landscaping. Can, can you just give us a, an idea of who, if anyone, you think might be adversely impacted by this maximal lighting you're going to have on the lot itself?
Well, the buildings to our south, RHR, are higher, so I suspect they'll look down. And when I say maximally illuminate, I don't mean outside the parameters of your ordinance, just whatever the lumens or wattage that, that are allowed, just simply for safety purposes. So I, and, and we said it'll be environmental type lighting, the illumination of which will not escape the boundaries of the property. So it'll be that downcast, dark sky stuff that's, it's, it's bright as heck, but it meets your, meets your ordinance.
Right. So, so you're saying it's going to be somewhat environmentally sensitive as to the adjoining properties, but it's going to provide maximum lighting?
Yes, sir.
Presumes it's LED, right?
Sir?
I presume it's some form of LED lighting, right?
I don't know, but if, if you would like, we haven't got as a stipulation, but I, we could submit a photometric plan during the plan review process if, if you think that would be appropriate. Happy to do that.
And Chinese pistachio, a Chinese pistachio tree? I'm, I'm not conversant with those necessarily. Are those, are those actual pistachio bearing? Or they, you have any idea about that? But that's what, that's what it shows in the middle of the parking lot. I was just going to suggest if it's not ornamental, if it actually bears fruit, that maybe that might not be the best thing to have.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll give, our engineer on this was Terry Boomer. He's a, he's a PE associated with this specific company, which is an arbors, a landscaping, landscape planning company. So I'll, I'll question them about the, the efficacy of the, of the trees. They're all hard to grow in, in islands in the middle of asphalt parking lots, but these will be, of course, irrigated, and, and I'll, I'll look into the etiology of the pistachio.
Okay. Very good. Can I just ask you to comment briefly on the safety procedures that are in place to prevent anything leaking from the gas tanks reaching any of the adjoining residential properties?
Oh, certainly. There is a, and of course, we don't specifically stipulate this because it's a requirement for the, for the stormwater management division, but there'll be gas and oil separators built into the, the detention facilities, the water quality components. It has to, to exceed a high, a high rate in terms of the water quality exiting the property. That's probably a better technical question for Carl, but, but I know that they, they are going to require an oil gas separator wherever Carl went. Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I think we wanted to hear from Amy Diaz, correct? Amy, can you, could you come up?
Amy Diaz, DOT.
I think Commissioner Anderson.
Yeah. Hi, Amy.
Hi.
Just wanted to see if you could help just me understand the current site plan and how, how it relates to some of the comments around just ingress. I know there are some comments around left turn waivers and D cell lanes and to be determined, and does, does this plan, in terms of the most recent plan on the screen right here, is there any need for anything like a D cell lane?
Yes, there, there are some comments that have not been addressed yet in this site plan. So our comments included basically number six and seven made the driveways one-way. The northern driveway restricted to exit only, and the southern driveway restricted to entrance only. It's an attempt to get the driveway spacing further apart. For the entrance-only driveway, we then went on to number, comment eight, that said that we needed a deceleration lane. You are correct. And that comment nine went into the left turn lane requirement. So the, the constructability memo, it's, we call it a seminal four, is not new. We've, we've had it around for a number of years. We started including it in comments because we've run into issues where we've recommended a left turn lane. It gets stipulated, and then when we get into plan review, we find out that it can't be built. And so we're trying to make sure they don't have to come through another business item to, to remove turn lanes that have been stipulated if, if we approve the seminal four that says that there's a reason for a waiver. So that's the, the reason for that particular wording being added relatively recently.
Got it. So in light of that, just to confirm, maybe this, this might just be repetitive just for the audience, I'd say too, that the addressing comments seven, eight, and nine are, go with those a little bit in order. The, the first one was, right, there would be a single movement in the south, just right in only? Is that the recommendation?
It is entrance only.
Entrance only, okay.
So the left turn, we have not stated that that needs to be prohibited. That's something that we would review as part of the left turn waiver, you know, if it's a high number of vehicles, but the left turn can't, lane can't be installed, that would be something that we'd have to consider at that point.
Okay. Is there an area where this is reworked, where that condition to allow for entrance and exit from that would make sense, or is that something where it's dictated basically by the traffic flows and, and volumes that exist there today, and really you have to have an entrance, I'm sorry, entrance only to have, create a safe condition?
Correct. We have it, we can review the entrance there, since, sorry, the exit there, since you have an exit just to the north of there, unless they needed it for, like, fuel manipulation with, for the trucks within the site, which we do have concerns that fuel trucks are going to have difficulty with this site. But unless it was needed for something like that, we would prefer to see it as, as, as one-way, which also meets expectations for drivers when, when the other driveway is one-way in the other direction.
Okay. So that would be on step seven, really strong preference for having that be entrance only on the south, exit only on the north?
Yes. If, if they have a, a reason that that recommendation needs to be reconsidered, then we're willing to discuss that with them further. But as of right now, from what I know, that is, that recommendation stands.
Okay. And then the D cell lane, is there, does this version even present without a decent lane, D cell lane, additional safety hazards, or is it more to be consistent with just driver movements and expectations and?
Well, deceleration lanes at many entrances are not driven by level of service, they're driven by safety. It's to get the ability to get slowing and turning traffic out of the way of the through lane. And so that would be the primary driver behind recommending one here as part of our, our typical development standard for this classification of road.
Is there enough room, given the exit movement to the north, to add a significant D cell lane without basically shifting that whole landscaping buffer a bit to the south and creating an entrance only?
So the, the northern driveway, having an exit there, the, doesn't really relate as much to the D cell lane, in that there's a paint approach we can do to show people that are exiting that they need to move over, that that's not a through lane.
Okay.
So that's not the concern. However, the landscaping island and their internal circulation would certainly be impacted by a deceleration lane. That landscaping strip along their frontage, and then how they're going to get vehicles around their pumps
Okay.
would be, would be affected.
Okay.
Because it, we would go basically 11, 12 feet further into their site than they show, and that eats into the landscape buffer, which if that gets shifted, eats into their, their internal circulation lane.
Got it. Okay. And then, thank you for that. And then step nine, that was something where, that sounded like one where there need to be more analysis?
Right. We would recommend a left turn lane there. That would be our standard recommendation. But we've already taken a look at the, at the potential difficulty of fitting that with an existing right-of-way. The left turn lane at, at a southern entrance, it's not along their frontage, so we would need to, to do it with an existing right-of-way that already belongs to the county, and we're not sure that can be installed.
Okay.
So that's, basically, we, we wanted to give an out for that to continue in plan review, rather than requiring other business.
Okay. So, so seven and eight sound like a bit more binding constraint, so to speak?
Yes.
At this time, that, where eight, number nine is a little bit more of a, it's a nice to have, but given the unique considerations for this site, might be a bit, be, there'll be a bit more give on that one?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you for walking me through that.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Hughes?
So Commissioner Anderson, just, just so I make sure I'm clear, what are you suggesting? Would you prefer a revised site plan that reflects compliance with seven and eight before?
Yeah, I, I would, I know usually when we make recommendations, there's a, subject to, you know, DOT staff comments, but given that this is a, a little bit more of a recommendation, I, I would, you know, I, and I, I try to stay in my lane in the sense of I'm not trying to step into a kind of a technical, put on a technical hat here. But I would also like to at least have a little bit more comfort that should there be a need that's driven by safety for provision of a D cell lane, that if there's a site plan that can show that, I think that would be helpful and would allow us to think through the circulation. It sounds like that combined with the other issue around restriction on entrance may present in this site plan some problems as well. If we give, if we actually held them to that, that would be, present some issues around circulation that could be challenging. And the last, the reason why I kind of focus on that a little bit more here is just any challenges in design and difficulties in design at this stage that create for difficulty in circulation can, can easily spill out onto the street and the main right-of-way and create additional hazards. So this is a situation where just want to be a little bit more thoughtful about solving for safety first, and seeing what that impacts in terms of, you know, the existing site.
Okay.
So that's just my thought on that, prioritizing those two in particular a little bit more.
Do you think there'd be, your value in holding this for 30 days, giving the applicant time to revise the site plan with respect to looking at a D cell lane and further exploring circulation as it relates to safety?
I personally would err on that side, just to, given that it was a recommendation from DOT, and just having this discussion with, with, with Amy, that this seems like something where at least seven and eight have a little bit more heft to them, that will be addressed potentially in site plan review, but might make sense to at least see a little bit more visually here.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Garvis?
If I may add, good, good technical points, and I certainly didn't mean to misrepresent what DOT wants, and, and those are not unanticipated, and we can do those, but, but actually, we, our engineer has worked him into an iteration, another planned iteration, so this is something we could submit well before the, the deadline, before the Board of Commissioners. And so, because we've already got our engineer working on, on that, the potential of having to do a left turn lane, because we anticipate they're going to recommend it, and I don't know if the functionality study, whatever it's called, is, is, is needed or not, but we can revise the plans to incorporate everything you just mentioned on the site plan, and don't need 30 days to do it, if that, if that's of any help.
You think you can, you can do it in two weeks before the?
We can, we can do it by the end of this week.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
With, with that, then I would recommend that we, recommend approval of Z 48, subject to staff's recommendations and conditions in their zoning analysis, the zoning stipulation letter dated July 6, 2022, and that the applicant agree to submit a revised site plan prior to the next Board of Commissioners zoning hearing.
Well, they have a deadline for that, so we'll, we'll submit it prior to the, the deadline, which is well in excess of that BOC meeting. So that, that staff DOT has it, and of course, the Commissioners will as well.
Okay. Okay. Prior to the next Board of Commissioners zoning hearing?
Yes, sir. Prior to their deadline, so it's...
Prior to their deadline?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that is my recommendation.
Have a second by Commissioner Anderson. Any discussion? No, let's call the question. Voted five to zero. We recommend approval of Z 48. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Hughes?
And with that, we are going to break for lunch, and we'll, we'll come back and resume. Hearing's at 1:15.
And welcome back from our lunch break to the August 2nd Planning Commission zoning hearing. We'll get started. I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Peyton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Board. During the break, we learned that we have a case that is requesting to be withdrawn without prejudice, and that is case Z-51 of 2022, Lennar, Georgia, Inc. And the applicant again is requesting that they be, that they withdraw without prejudice.
Okay, that's in District 1, so I'll turn it to Commissioner Malone for a motion on that.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move to allow the withdrawal of Z-51 without prejudice?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dan. Call a question? Okay, we will draw Z-51 from the agenda without prejudice. Thank you.
All right, our next case is Z-50, R O M, USA Properties LLC. They're requesting a rezoning from R-20 to NRC for a daycare and landlot 494 of the 19th District. They're located on the south side of Macklin Road and on the west side of Sandtown Road. Is the applicant present? They are. Let the record show the applicant is present. Is there anyone here in opposition of Z-50? Let the record show there are two people in opposition. All those that wish to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
And just for the record, if you were here for Z-51 that was withdrawn, you can, you're free to leave. That won't be heard today. It was withdrawn from the agenda. The case has been withdrawn, so it's done.
You're welcome to call the zoning office, and we will... Thank you.
All right, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. As we rolled through the agenda this morning, I had my eyes on this coveted for a slot after lunch. Thank you for hearing us. My name's Giles Ward. I'm with Equitable Property Company. We're here about the property on the corner southwest Sandtown Road and Macklin Road, and we are requesting rezoning from R-20 to NRC for the purpose of building a daycare company. We are the preferred developer for a company named TLE, The Learning Experience. They are a national daycare provider with more than 350 locations in the greater Atlanta area. They have one open. We have four under development, hoping this will be our fifth, and looking to do 15 to 18 more in the next 18 months. So, TLE, it's a national brand. It's developed by the corporate parent, and then they find local franchise operators who will be on the ground here. So, I'd just say, there's a demonstrated need for daycare. TLE is a national, like, recognized provider of the service and looking to establish a firm footprint in the sort of greater Atlanta area. We're very excited about the site. Mr. Hyde here with me. He's got some, he's our engineer. He's got some comments on it. But I'll just say, I made possibly the short-sighted decision to include my personal cellphone number on the letter that we sent out to all the neighbors. Of the more than 140 letters we sent out, I received no phone calls or letters in regard or opposition to this, so I'll just state that.
Thanks, Giles. I'm Hunter Hyde with CHA Consulting. We're the civil engineer for the project. And I don't know if we can flip to the actual site plan on the, as part of the report, but I just want to make a quick comment, which was, we've, of course, at this point, we've received staff comments and reviewed them thoroughly, and we have no issues with being able to address those review comments if we're able to get through the rezoning process. There is one item that, if you look at our site plan, you will not see, and I just want to point out, that Cobb DOT did recommend right turn lanes for both of the two driveways on each road. So, we've, we understand that that is a comment, and we aim to address it. It's just not going to be shown up on your, the site plan in your packets. So, and of course, we're here to address any more questions you may have. Thank you.
There you go. As you see, it's a, it's a 3.3 acre combined lot. We've positioned the daycare in the back corner, sort of on a downhill part of that. Our primary focus is the daycare. If there's land left over, we'd like to find a complimentary and satisfactory to both the commission and the daycare use for that, but that has, there's no current use considered, other than the daycare has a number of restricted uses, which, like, including gas stations and, like, yeah, they've got a list of restrictions that they'd like us to adhere to. So, we've received comments from staff that they are recommending not to approve this, and we'd like to address any of those, and any questions from the commission.
All right, awesome. Thank you. You can have a seat. We'll hear from opposition next.
Good afternoon. My name is Richard Pine. I'm president of the Arbor Ridge HOA. We're a senior community on West Sandtown directly across from the proposed site there. We're 56 homes. We're all elderly. We're getting older, and our reactions aren't as good as they used to be. And we're concerned about the traffic buildup and a few other things that concerns this. West Sandtown Road has been used since Mud Creek Soccer Complex opened up as a thoroughfare to cut through to Barrett Parkway. Traffic is heavy in the mornings at commuter time, in the evenings at commuter time, and also with the soccer fields there, it's crazy at night. I've gone to the Cobb Police to complain about speeding and other things and have not gotten any help from that, but that's another, that's another story. We're just concerned because their exit is directly opposite our entrance, and it's hard to see coming from the left. It's hard to see coming from the right. That intersection backs up terribly in the afternoons, which is probably prime time for pickups for childcare kids. I'm not against childcare. Believe me, I have grandkids. I know what it's like. It's needed. But maybe there could be some other type of road system put in there, an extra lanes or something like that. They just redid the intersection when they repaved Macklin Road, and they made it wider, but with all the possible traffic coming in, I think it may need to be relooked at by DOT and maybe even the Cobb Police to see what can be done to ease the situation or to, you know, have something there to stop people from piling in and out. Luckily, there haven't been many accidents, but I don't want to see any accidents. Let's see. Basically, that's about all I wanted to say. As I say, I'm not against the daycare center, but the traffic problem is going to be a big one because it's used so much now by people cutting through the soccer field to get to Barrett Parkway and back and forth. So, I hope you can consider that in your decision, and I thank you for the time. Thank you.
Do we have one other in opposition? Or just?
I was. I did not get sworn in.
Oh, you can do that.
Hello. I'm Michael Brooks. I live just across the street from Dowell Elementary School, which is going to be right across, well, y'all know where Dowell Elementary School is, just north of this intersection there on, on Macklin. So, West Sandtown, and what that gentleman said is correct. There's a lot of traffic concentrated in certain parts, parts of the day. So, in the morning, the elementary school backs up, coming on from Macklin onto Macklin to West Sandtown, and also leaving the school, getting back to Macklin as well. So, leaving subdivisions, his subdivision and my subdivision as well, is difficult during the certain parts, certain parts of the day. Also, the amount of traffic that's leaving that area going through to Mud Creek. That road is, has been widened right there at the intersection, but once you get further into Mud Creek Park, that, that street narrows. No wide, no sidewalks, no anything. That's a major corridor for walkers, for bike riders, for runners to get back and forth from, we're on our side, the north side of West Sandtown over to Mud Creek. I'm opposed to this just because of the amount of traffic at concentrated times that are going to come through there, especially in the mornings, especially in the evenings as well. And then you have people that are rushing to get there before they close or open, that they'll be leaving those timeframes and possibly speeding down West Sandtown and Macklin to get there. So, and that's it.
Thank you. All right, we will turn this over to Commissioner Hughes and District 4.
Thank you, Chairman Vault. If I could get the applicants to come back up. Good afternoon. I know you guys mentioned that you've sent out notices, I guess with your cellphone number on it, and you said no one had reached out to you. I'm assuming y'all haven't, you had, have you had any conversations with the two gentlemen that are here?
No, we haven't had the opportunity yet, but we will.
Okay. I'm just, I don't know if there's any benefit to taking some time to meet with them and see if there's an opportunity to, to address some of the concerns that, that they've highlighted here today with respect to traffic.
Absolutely. And I think the DOT recommendation will address some of those, and we'll incorporate that in the next plan, so.
To the gentleman that spoke, are you guys open, open to having some additional dialogue with these gentlemen?
All right. We want to be a good neighbor, so.
Could you, you talk a little bit more about how the, the facility will operate, you know, hours of operation, you know, square footage of the building, employees, you know, that sort of thing, and the site plan itself?
Sure. Yeah, the facility itself is 10,000 square feet, single-story. There's a 5,000 square foot playground. The enrollment would be limited to, would be no more than 180 children, which is far less than it, than the sort of, I think the state regulation is 35 square feet per child. I think, yeah, that we've got 35 parking spaces. This preliminary site plan is open to, like, we're open to moving the building anywhere on the property and the ingress egress to sort of alleviate any traffic problems. So, yeah, happy to address any specific questions, but I think typically eight to 10 staff members. And... And, yeah, this, this national brand is, I guess, national, nationally supported but locally run, so the curriculum is national and the support the franchisee receives is , is national, but the, the, the ownership and the staffing is obviously all local.
Has the franchisee already been selected for this location?
No, they typically build and then recruit a franchisee to a, to a, a location that is either under or close to completion.
Okay. Hours of operation?
6:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m.
Okay.
Five days a week.
Any other questions from commissioners?
I was interested in your earlier comments about compatible properties and what you intended to do with the rest of the property. Could you speak to that a little bit more?
If it turns, if, if we end up needing to, again, our, our primary use is going to be the daycare, so it'll be very much based on what space is available after we've come to a satisfactory design, but then open to restrictions that would make it acceptable to, to, to this, this group too.
But you would be, you're seeking the zoning for the entire property?
For the entire property, yeah.
And you indicated that there was a list of either restrictions or permissions or preferences on behalf of your?
Yeah, it included, like, gas stations.
Is that a preference or a exclusion?
No, it's a, it's a requirement of theirs. Gas stations, anything serving alcohol or liquor, strip clubs, like massage parlors, vape.
Things that would present a safety concern to the children?
Yep.
Basically?
And just bring incompatible users or?
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead. Now, I was going to say, and to that end, to Commissioner Dance's comment about that, is that something you'd be willing to stipulate in writing?
Yeah.
That you would restrict those types of, okay, all right. Commissioner Lula.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One concern I would have, if, given the comments we've had about there being a lot of folks looking for cut-throughs in this area, would be if you're going to have a flow of traffic coming through your place that also services another business, and you're going to have people getting out with their one, two, three-year-olds, right?
Yeah.
You really don't want traffic proceeding at any kind of velocity through an area that's going to have that loading and unloading. I'd love to see some thought given to the, to the traffic pattern and to the, to the location of the parking spaces in such a manner where there, there's a, a lower risk of some sort of incident, adverse incident with folks just hauling through the lot as opposed to?
Absolutely.
Whether, whether that's speed bumps, whether that's creating some, putting some curbing in, in certain areas, whether that's running like an interior road and then a separate parking lot, but something, that'd, that'd be a concern of mine if there are going to be two businesses there feeding off this same area. I'm just concerned about folks coming off of Macklin and wanting to go what appears to be south on West Sandtown and creating some high-speed internal, or too fast internal traffic in your, in your lot.
Yeah, we would limit cut-through traffic and try to segregate the two businesses so that those vehicle flows did not overlap.
Mr. Chairman, I just had a question for, for Amy, for DOT.
Yeah, I was going to ask her to come up.
You, you have that coming still?
One other question, just elevations of what the building might look like, do y'all have those at this point?
We don't have them currently, but I'm sure we can easily get them.
Okay.
The elevations of the, the front of the building?
Yeah, what, what the side, what the exteriors of the building?
The site slopes from, like, towards the sort of southwest, so the sort of, the building sits fairly low on that lot.
Okay.
Same story.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thanks.
If I could get Amy Diaz come up?
Amy Diaz, DOT.
Hey, Amy, just, could you just kind of share some of the observations that obviously DOT, DOT has related to the current site plan and what some of the recommendations are, Charlesy? I'm assuming this doesn't rise to a level where traffic study would be needed, just based on square footage or?
No, it doesn't. Now, if, and, and from the applicant meeting, I remember that, that they don't have this, but if there is a drop-off area, then they do have to provide a circulation plan, and that's not in our comments yet because it was my understanding that it was going to be a park and walk-in situation, but if that is the case with, especially with these revisions that they're looking at, then that does need to be provided to DOT.
Gotcha, a drop-off plan.
Yeah, it's called a circulation plan, but basically it just shows where vehicles can queue inside their, their space, how many vehicles can queue without impacting the roadway, and where their drop-off is.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for Amy? Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Amy, referring to the exit point on West Sandtown?
Yes, sir.
Is that what you believe the optimum exit point to be in terms of folks having a, a good line of sight in two directions and being able to proceed safely onto West Sandtown?
So we have a comment in there, it's a standard development requirement that they will have to meet site distance for West Sandtown, because we did have some concerns about that, but we don't have the topographical information to be able to say for sure if they can meet the, the minimum requirement for site distance or not. It may require shifting to one degree or another. We would like it to be lined up with, across the street if possible, but if we have to shift it because of site distance, then that's something that we're open to.
And if you shift it because of site distance, you usually would want the offset to be some minimum amount relative?
Normally, so our standard is offset is 125 feet from centerline to centerline. If it is a positive offset, and this is technical and, and a little bit confusing, but basically, so your left turns do not overlap. So like if you have left turns coming in, and I have, I have an example if anybody would like to see it later, but if you have left turns that are separated instead of overlapping by the offset, then, then we can consider a shorter distance. That's something that we have actually in the Z36 that was heard today, because it was a positive offset, we were able to, to waive the 125 distance, and this one is, if they shift it further to the south, would also be a positive offset.
Sorry, one more question for Amy. Are you recommending our full access in, in and out on both, just West Sandtown and Macklin at this point?
So Macklin has a raised median there, so, so it is right in, right out by default.
Okay.
On West Sandtown, it was my understanding, and I know we've heard differently from the citizens today, but it was my understanding that, that West Sandtown is gated by the Parks Department during much of the day, so we did not have a lot of, of concern about a local road that's gated on one end. I have a note now to follow up with the Parks Department to see if they are leaving that road open to traffic and, and allowing that connecting traffic to go through, because that might affect our concerns as far as what's traveling on West Sandtown.
I'm glad you brought up the gated thing, because I'm very familiar with that, I had assigned to play soccer at Mud Creek, so I know very well the gated.
Yeah, I don't go there very often, but every time I've been there, it's been gated.
Yeah.
But, but yeah, I need to follow up with, with Parks, I'm not disputing the citizens, it's just not something that had been brought to our attention.
Gotcha, okay. All right, thank you.
No problem.
Yeah, I think based on some of the conversation here today, if, I'd like to recommend we hold this for 30 days to give the applicant and the surrounding community members who are represented here today an opportunity to sit down and have some conversation about the project and specifically traffic concerns, and see if there's a, an opportunity for a happy median for both sides, a win-win for both sides, so that would be my motion at this point.
Second?
A second from Commissioner Dance. Any discussion? Now we'll call the question. About a vote of five to zero, we will hold Z50 and allow the applicant to meet with the neighbors as well as address some of the other issues raised today. Thank you.
Our next case is Z52 Newport 360 Capital LLC, requesting rezoning from GC to RRC for a multifamily residential development and landlot 363 of the 16th District. We're located on the east side of Town Park Drive, north of Town Park Lane. The applicant's rep is present, is there anyone here opposed to Z52? Let the rec, show there is one. All those that wish to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Planning Commissioners, I'm Kevin Moore, and pleased to represent Newport 360 Capital in this application for rezoning. Newport has a long and very successful history, both in Cobb County, metropolitan Atlanta, and elsewhere, in developing and building luxury, high-end, multifamily communities, and is presented this application here today for the property that's located in the Town Center CID, located in the Regional Activity Center, located in and around Town Center. The actual address is 108 Town Park Drive. This is the existing zoning map for this area, and it's hard to make a lot of sense of it because of the, the various zoning categories, but you do see the, in prominence in the middle, you see the large GC, that's the dark red, and then you see the also large GC kind of to the right, that's at the intersection of 575, which is on the right-hand side, in Chastain Road, and it's that smaller GC section, the northern parcel, which is the subject of this application here today, to rezone it from GC to RRC for another Newport luxury, high-end, multifamily community at that location. But just wanted you to see where the positioning is, as well as see how those surrounding zonings, which include office mid-rise immediately to the north and adjacent in what is called the Town Park Development. The Town Park Development, which is that curvy road as it comes around off of Chastain Road, was started initially envisioned as a mixed-use type of development. Initially, it was started as office development, which is where you see the GC, the office mid-rise, which is taller office buildings and PVC, and you see those categories there, includes hotel and retail just on the frontage along Chastain Road, which is across from this property. There's also a townhome development, which is across from this property, it's a little bit smaller, but you can see how this came together over any number of years. Turning to the land use plan, which we think is critical here as well, you see that this area, entire area, is dominated by being within a regional activity center, which is appropriate. As you know, there's only two regional activity centers in all of Cobb County, one is centered here in the Town Center area, and one is centered around our other regional mall area, which is the Cumberland area, which is also is a regional activity center where this type of development is encouraged, and is encouraged from both economic generation standpoint as well as from proper land use planning standpoint as well. And in fact, this particular regional activity center in this particular area along Town Park is shown as a regional activity center with a sub-area classification of office, which includes and supports specifically that mid- or high-rise residential developments are also appropriate, which are those that would be over four stories. Within this regional activity center, and specifically this property, is included within that sub-area classification, which we again think is very important in your consideration, especially given our proposal for a multifamily community on this parcel. Turning to the site plan itself, you see our property located to the left, on your screen is Town Park. This is a proposal for 285 multifamily units. Broken down, this, as you have seen in, in previous or prior communities such as this and developments that have been built recently, and by recently, I mean the last five to 10 years, this is at 285 units. That approximate unit breakdown is about 60% one-bedroom, about 35% two-bedroom, and about 5% three-bedroom, plus or minus, you know, once they get their final programming. But it gives you that breakdown so that you can see the type of resident in terms of what they're looking for, and especially here, what you'll notice for this project especially, it stands out, and this is really in the multifamily sector, and that is, it's called a wrap. It's a wrap because it wraps around a structured parking deck. This built, proposed building is six stories, and it wraps around the parking, which is in the interior, so that's not seen from the exterior. You're seeing on the right-hand side is 575 where this property backs up to. It also provides in the interior two well-appointed amenity areas, one with a pool clubhouse type of feature that's built into the community, as well as a more garden-type amenity as well that's built into the community. Again, the importance of having the wrap or the parking structure is this, is that it lends itself, and in fact, it marks itself as a luxury brand at that point in time. And in fact, in the Town Center area, there is not a multifamily market-rate community that has a parking structure. All of your multifamily communities that have been approved recently and/or have been constructed and developed recently in the Town Center area are all surface parked, which is perfectly fine and appropriate, but when you surface park multifamily, you use a lot more property to do so, but when you have a parking structure and a parking deck and you wrap it like this, in this format, what it provides for your residents is each and every resident has covered parking. Again, that's what's demanded in this segment and what is not present in Town Center area now. The only parking or structured parking types of multifamily structures are actually student housing that's in this area, associated with KSU, and there, there are a small handful of student housing communities that have been built on smaller pieces of property like this that are, have parking decks, but those are associated with student housing. What's not in this market is what's being proposed by Newport, which is a high-end multifamily development. You can see the proposed architecture as well, and you can see the high-end appointments that come with what Newport is planning for this location. Again, you can also see as we go through some of these vision pictures, what the amenities, and those are explained in our stipulation letter as well, high-end appointment of amenities, business centers, conference rooms, meeting rooms, banquet rooms, fitness rooms and the like that are spread throughout this proposed facility, that again lend itself to the very specific market that does not exist in terms of this type of development and multifamily development in the Town Center area. And again, you can see the type of development and community that Newport brings to the table in this location. I also want to point out to you, and these are two letters that were provided to your Cobb County staff and a part of the, part of your package, we also reached out to our surrounding neighbors, both the commercial office neighbors as well as residential neighbors, and to that end, we did receive a letter of support from the Town Park Village Homeowners' Association. That Homeowners' Association Board did express its support for this development, that is, the townhome development that's located directly across on Town Park, and they did express their support for this development, playing off of the fact that Town Park has a very specific area that has the hotel, it has the Ruth Chris, it has the restaurants, it has office, and it has limited residential, and it has some great office. This particular location is not great office. It's a single-story office building that is way past its economic shelf life, and it just simply doesn't serve any further economic viability as a single office location, and therefore, we're providing what we believe is an excellent redevelopment of this site, and one, at least the HOA Board has recognized, as providing additional vibrance, energy to what is supposed to be a walkable Town Park community and providing additional support for those businesses, additional walkable support for those businesses, and they cite that specifically in their letter. And basically, you have the same from the owner of the Town Park Commons Office Park, which is the one I showed you as well, with their. which is the one I showed you as well, with their Class A offices that have been occupied. Those, however, have plenty of economic shelf life left, and those, that Office Park has likewise expressed its support, again noting that this is supposed to be a true mixed-use Town Park spot in this regional activity center, and one that needs the vibrancy and energy to continue, both from an office standpoint, business standpoint, restaurant and retail standpoint. The other couple of things I wanted to speak to you about is, they've been part of some discussions that have been held. Number one is it relates to density.
You've got one minute, Kevin.
Sure.
Now that you have one minute.
Oh, yeah, of course. I thought you wanted a question. One is it relates to density, and I wanted to explain our position as it relates to that. On a per-unit, on a unit-per-acre basis, yes, this is, has a high density, if you just look at units per acre. But that, to me, is using the wrong metric, and from our position, is using the complete wrong metric. It's comparing apples and oranges. This is a proposed 285-unit multifamily community. Multifamily communities approved in Town Center and in Cumberland have usually ranged between 285 on the low end, up to 350. So from a community density standpoint, the number is correct and consistent. But when you wrap it, when you have a parking structure, you don't need 17 acres of paved parking. You just need the ability to put the structure. And so the proper metric for us is the number of units, not the number of units per acre. With that, we would appreciate and respectfully request your recommendation of approval. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll hear from the opposition.
I'm Robin Gerheta. I'm speaking on behalf of the Town Park residents, and as well as the Bells Ferry Civic Commission. The Town Park Village HOA and Bells Ferry Civic Association is in opposition to rezoning Z-52. Next slide. So part of our rationale is provided in this overview. In this map, we can see the proposed site, Z-52, along with three other sites. So in the blue, you have the Office Park. In the green, you have the Town Park Village Townhomes, which I'm a resident of, and I'm within 1,000 feet of Z-52. And you also have the I-575 off-ramp, which feeds into Chastain Road and is also adjacent to Town Park Drive. Next slide. So this picture shows the existing daily traffic buildup along Town Park Lane, and from this vantage point, this is within 50 feet of the proposed site. So this amount of traffic impedes residents' ability to turn onto Town Park Lane and make that turn onto I-575. This is a daily problem, Monday through Friday, mornings and afternoons. And so this is, from this point through that tree line on the left third, you would be able to see those apartment buildings. So there are extensive, this is an extensive but not exhaustive list of objections from the homeowners, why this is an inappropriate use of this site. Number one is the high traffic that's compounded by the office tenants that are adjacent to this site, but also the inbound traffic coming from I-575. There's also the concern about car accidents involving loss of control on the road. Town Park Lane, Town Park Drive have a high degree of curvature. There's a lot of foliage that adds beauty to the neighborhood but also creates some blind spots. One of these critical blind spots is at Town Park Drive and Town Park Lane. Everyone in this community knows just the amount of caution that is needed to make that turn, just to get home after a long day of work. There's also loud music at the intersection, and this is without an added dense apartment complex. There's also stormwater runoff concerns. There will be a stormwater discharge that affects some established neighborhoods downstream. There are currently three multifamily developments approved in the nearby area. I mean, this is becoming an issue of saturation. We have student housing everywhere, and while this isn't specifically student housing, the complexion of the neighborhood is changing. This is becoming less suburban and more of a student kind of centered area. There's disruption of natural beauty. This is a very highly walkable community. It's very safe for pedestrians to use the adjacent roads for walking at all times of day, and we just, we don't want to see this increased vehicle presence that is going to just add to what we already have. This sets a precedent for office developments in this area to be repurposed for residential use. Once this occurs, it just opens a floodgate of other projects like it. And then there's the increased crime. There's an off-campus student housing development that's adjacent to this Town Park Office Park. It's actually just about 2,000 feet from this development along George Busby. So we've already seen increased crime. There's a greater police presence as a result of having, you know, more students in this area, more young people, non-homeowners. These problems, along with others, are just, they've increased since we saw the construction of this dorm-style apartment at George Busby and Town Park Lane. We've all been affected by it, unfortunately, and we just want to kind of turn the tide from future events like this. So, so how did this get approved? Well, Town Park Village HOA President did not consult with homeowners before sending this letter. No one was made aware of this. It's very important to note that this letter on the right side that speaks in favor of this development, it was done so without a quorum, without consent, and even in the closing remarks, HOA President Gordon Scott mentions that he does not speak for each individual homeowner. He does. He put his signature on this. And so it's very important to note that this letter of support was written without any communication to or from members before or since. So we ask, we the undersigned, ask this board to disregard the opinions of the board as no more than representative of the three individuals who sit on it. And then the undersigned represent the majority of those who live within 1,000 feet. This protest petition has more than half the number of signatures. It has more than a simple majority. It has an overwhelming majority of signatures from those who are affected most by this. And even with this limited number of signatures, it makes up almost entirely the half of the community, regardless of their proximity to the site. Now, there's multiple required variances that the developers did not state in their stipulation letter. These were submitted with the original conceptual plan, but not the latest one that's dated on 7/13. And so there's five zoning variances that are listed right here. So I just wanted to leave this in your consideration, Board, Planning Commission, and I appreciate you taking the time to listen.
Thank you. All right, this is in District 3, so I'm going to turn it to Commissioner Dance to lead the discussion.
I would like to ask Amy Diaz to come forward, please.
Amy Diaz, Cobb DOT.
Hello, Amy. Can you let us know where you are in terms of review of the, is it a traffic plan that's been submitted to you, and how recent it was, and what the status is?
So they submitted their full traffic study on July 13, and we are in the middle of reviewing it. I've read through it, but I have not gotten comments from all departments yet. So that's something that, in our updated comments that we submitted yesterday, mentions that we are still in review for that traffic study. I will say that there's a couple of assumptions in the traffic study that we need to revisit, but they should not have a major impact on the final results, which basically were just the standard improvements at the driveway intersection, no other improvements.
Okay. Have you looked at what the impact would be of the development on traffic in the area yet?
Well, one of the things I want to look at is the queuing that's been mentioned on Town Park Drive. The level of service that was reported for Chastain intersections was better than we anticipated. It's showing a level service D at worst along Chastain Road, and I know that area is very congested during the peak hours. So I want to see what the synchroanalysis says as far as queuing on Town Park, to see if it matches up to the pictures that we've seen, and we know that queuing is happening during the peak hours. That may be something that they have to calibrate in a revised study.
Okay, and so typically, you would be taking a look at this and interfacing with?
Yeah, something that's that detailed is something that we usually take a look at when we know the problem is in the area, because it takes a lot of drilling down to the numbers and the inch-long, inch-thick report, and getting into their actual analysis files to see what the results are. So it's when we know there's a queuing problem in the area or a level service problem in the area, that's when we drill down in our review to really make sure that we've lined everything up.
So how long do you expect it would take to complete your analysis?
I spoke to one of my direct reports yesterday about it, and she believes that we'll have all the comments by the end of this week.
End of this week?
The goal would be to have any review back to them next week, so that they would have a chance to respond before the B O C meeting.
Okay. Does anybody else have questions of Amy?
Yeah, Commissioner Bollong.
Thank you. Do you have any planned right-of-way acquisitions, construction activity, any needs to expand the service on the ramp or change the location of the ramp coming off of 575 South?
I'm glad you asked that, but it is something that has been brought to our attention by the Town Center CID. So they have a 2020 study that was done for Livable Centers Initiative Studies, L C I study, that showed the need for a kind of an additional 575 off-ramp that would, that would impact this property. However, there is no project programmed for that. It's been identified by a study, which Cobb DOT was a stakeholder in that study, but we don't have anything programmed. What we do at that point is we make the board and the developer aware that that project is there, and that if that project does come about in the future, it could impact any development that they have built.
All right, so do you have any idea the extent to which this planned project or future, future thought, thought of, scheduled, anticipated project?
Well, that's the thing, since it's not a program project, there is no schedule, there's no budget associated with it yet. So, and so, no, I don't. It's something that's been identified but is not programmed. If it was programmed, then we would have comments recommending against the development, but it is not programmed as yet.
Do you have any, any idea the extent to which the planned project or this proposed project might interfere with that?
Well, how much it would interfere with it? It would, it would impact it significantly if it happened, because it comes off of the existing I-75 ramp through this area.
Have you talked with anybody with the Town Center CID to get their input?
They're the ones that actually brought this to our attention. They sent us email late last Thursday, and we updated the comments to let you guys know that that was a concern that has been raised.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, whose project is that?
Well, it's not anybody's project yet. So it was identified through a livable centers initiative study that was done for the Town Center CID area, but Cobb DOT was involved as a stakeholder in that study. So it's something that's been identified as, as a regional project that is recommended, but it's not been programmed. It's no, no funds have been, it's currently, I guess you would call it a long-range, because there's, there's no planned project, S P O S project or whatever.
And so projects of that nature sometimes do and sometimes don't come to fruition.
Correct. That's why we can't recommend against the project, because it could potentially never happen.
Thank you.
But it would also, obviously, since it involves, the interstate would involve F H W A federal dollars and G D O's. So it's, it's a, it would be a large project if it comes through.
Okay. Anything else for her? And I see Mr. Moore teeing up here. If you can just come forward.
Thank you.
Ms. Moore, do you have any response to the discussion about the ramp project?
Yes, I would, which is why I was standing up, to try to state. I need to state, since it was brought forward on behalf of the property owner and the applicant, the Town Center CID, livable centers initiative concept is one that, you know, different groups use often to see, what do you think we could make, make here if we didn't have property rights in America and in the state of Georgia? How would we want to develop this? It showed this property and the G C portion that's on the front there on Chastain Road as developed for multifamily residential, by way of example. But it also showed the, an additional off-ramp on 575, basically straddling that property line, connecting directly with, and teeing up, connecting with the Town Park Lane. And so it would come along right there. It's just what it showed. It wasn't engineered, there was no civil aspect to it. It's just a concept that somebody had. The danger is that, exactly what Ms. Diaz said, and I want to certainly pat her on the back, I think she handled that question very well, because she was very careful in saying there's no project, there's no funding, there's no long-term planning, because it becomes a very dangerous situation. And on behalf of the owner and the applicant, we're stating right now and here today that if consideration of some future unknown, never planned, never put a dollar to project is part of the consideration of this zoning application, then what you're doing is you're taking this owner's property, from our view. And I'm forced to say that. I don't like to say that, but you're, I'm forced to say that you're taking.
We would potentially be taking.
Taking that property. Our, our position would be it constitutes a constitutional taking if you're saying, oh, we're not going to take it. We might take it, and as a result, we have to consider it.
Okay. From our standpoint, we've only asked a question.
That's, I just have to say it, and you know I have to say that.
Right.
To protect my client, I do have that role as well.
Right. So I appreciate that.
Sure.
With respect to the Town Park Village HOA documentation, some, one thing I noted in there is this, there's this discussion about if this is truly a walkable live-work-play. Is that what this project is?
It.
If, if this area is truly a livable walk-work-play area, does this, does this fit into that concept?
It absolutely fits into that concept.
Okay, can you explain that?
Sure. Well, right now, Town Park, and you see on your screen, it does have the townhomes from which we were just discussing. That's the only residential, other than what's now been done on the opposite side of Town Park, which is student housing, a student housing project. But as far as residents to provide the live part of live-work-play is fairly limited. It's really dominated by office and then the retail, restaurant, hotel. And so what this does is add and actually create further live in the live-work-play aspect.
And so how, how does walk, how is walkability affected by the traffic issues that? Can you answer that question, or do I need to explain it further?
No, I think you're saying, does that, does that create some sort of conflict? And the walkability here is high, and in fact, there are crosswalks, sidewalks that are throughout this Town Park area and along Chastain and so forth. It's highly walkable, and it would continue to be highly walkable from that standpoint.
Okay. Are there any plans for any bridge or aerial crossing over into the more commercial area?
There's not, to my, to my knowledge. You're talking about across Chastain Road?
No, I'm talking about across Town Park Drive.
Oh, across Town Park, it would not be needed. And if, if the county thought it necessary, we could certainly create a pedestrian crossing there, but it's, every time I've been there, I get that probably first thing in the morning that P M or A M or P M peak times, there's probably some queuing. I mean, I saw a picture, but other times, it's not like that. Town Park is not what I would call a busy street, from my personal experience. Now, somebody else who lives there would, might say something different, but it's not. If you're going to, on Town Park, you're going because you either live there or your office is there.
Okay, and so are there offices within this building, or is this only residential?
This, there's, the proposal is for just residential. That's correct.
Okay, so those areas where we saw where there were meeting spaces, that would just be where an individual would invite someone?
Correct.
In for a conversation?
Business centers, workspace, and things like that that would be provided as part of the amenity.
That's for the residents, not for outsiders to use, right?
Correct. It's part of the amenity that's being provided.
Okay, and I believe when we were in our planning session the other day, we inquired about this. this, the six-story concept.
Mm-hmm.
Is that an exception in this area, or?
The six stories-
Does that create some kind of precedent in this area?
It doesn't, from our standpoint. You have, I think it's a 10-story hotel directly across the street. So from a height standpoint, it doesn't set a precedent. And then, as we showed, the property to our north that adjoins us is zoned office mid-rise. So to me, there's no precedent whatsoever. As well as other properties are zoned office mid-rise, as well as this property is designated within the Regional Activity Center for mid-to-high-rise residential as well. So no, there's no precedent from the height standpoint.
And Ms. Diaz testified that, testified, let us know that the traffic study recently was received and now is under review. Do you agree with that?
Yeah, it's whatever Ms. Diaz said, but I think she said it was submitted July 13th, the full study, and so they've had it, and I guess it's still under review.
Okay. And so that is something that your client would participate in as they move along with that?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Respond to any comments that they have and do so expeditiously.
Okay. Because it seems that traffic is an identified concern in this manner, so it would be important to make sure we have that study completed. Does anybody else have further questions, first, Mr. Moore?
Commissioner Beloine.
Kevin, thank you. On this topic, if I understand it right, it's a six-story building, correct?
Yes.
So the parking deck, of course, would be still, I assume steel reinforced concrete of some kind, whether it's precast or poured in place?
Right. Because it is a concrete, yes, parking structure.
But then the buildings themselves would be six stories of stick frame? Is that correct?
I believe that's correct, yes.
I believe until recently, the building code only allowed five generally?
Could be. I'm not a building code expert, I'm a land use guy.
I was hoping you might have something, some reference for me to read or anything, any ideas in that regard, no?
I do not. I assume if they're proposing it, that it can be built, since that's what they do.
Okay. Does the current building have any tenants in it?
It did. It no longer has an office tenant. Then the owner no longer occupies it for their office use. Like I said, its economic shelf life has ended.
So the owner operated the business out of there but left very recently?
It was the, I believe it was the Municipal Gas Authority, and I think they, my understanding is they vacated, whether it was last year or last month, I'm not certain, but I know that they have, that they no longer have their base of operations there.
Okay. And the current building, of course, is pretty far removed from 575, the 575 ramp. If you could go back to, if I could get the assistance of our technical department, if we can go back to the proposal? So under this proposal, there would be things placed relatively near to the perimeter of the property. Is that fair?
I didn't quite catch what you were asking. I apologize.
Yes. Under your plan to build on the property, if this were approved, you would build things that would be fairly close to the property line, nearest to 575 ramp, correct?
It's within the required setbacks, but yes.
And what is it you'd have here within the setbacks, if anything?
The only thing that's within the setbacks looks like a fire lane.
What was that?
A fire lane.
Fire lane?
Yes.
So under your current plan, you're also leaving no landscape buffer on your property, is that correct?
To the ramp, there's opportunity for tree planting on the other side of the fire lane, for sure.
Do you know what the distance is between the far end of the fire lane and the property line?
I do not. But it appears to be probably about 10 feet or so in there, a minimum.
And are you suggesting that it's inappropriate for a planning commission to consider a possible future use of property in its deliberations or in its considerations?
It's my position it would be inappropriate for the county Planning Commission to consider a future public use of a portion of this property that's never been designated or voted on or even proposed to the Board of Commissioners. It's the public use part of it that becomes the issue, from our standpoint.
Thank you.
Saying, we don't want you to do something on this property because at some point in the future, it may or may not have a road through it. That's the inappropriateness from our standpoint.
All right. Thank you for your comments.
Do you have a question? Commissioner Anderson?
Kevin, thank you for walking through and talking about some of the elements of it.
Sure.
So I have a bunch of questions on, just to kind of build on what we, fellow commissioners were saying. So what's the general office vacancy in the park right now? Do you happen to know where that is?
I do not. My understanding from personal observation and from the discussions that were with the office, the one who owns the office that we provided the letter from, I believe those offices, I don't know what the vacancy rate is, but they're not vacant. They seem to have pretty good occupancy, from my personal observation. But I don't know what it is. I just know that those are newer, bigger, larger buildings, as opposed to this one.
And then, for the, there's, you know, I drive by this site because, you know, I have to drop my kids off to camp, and so-
Sure.
I've experienced it firsthand, so, and then, you know, there's the big for-sale sign out in the front by, I think, JLL, or I might be misremembering. But how long has that been marketed as a for-sale? And the reason I'm asking is, you know, I just want to understand kind of when the tenant, kind of match the timing on when the tenant vacated, had they provided notice of this vacant, or was there much of a leasing effort, or a value-add repositioning effort, or related that was contemplated for that?
Right. You know, my response is just anecdotal. The, and it's, has been on the market for quite some time.
Okay.
I have been approached by two other entities looking to do different types of projects with this from going back. This project itself has been in the works now for quite some time. Zoning's not the front end necessarily, once it's put under contract. But I can't speak exactly to how long it's been, it was, now, remember, the Municipal Gas Authority owned and occupied it, so-
Got it.
And then, I just know that as it's been told to me, and that's, I want to clarify that, is it's just, it's not an office building that you would go in and repurpose it, just due to its age and condition and, you know, how it was built. It's a one-story office building, and it's very much in underutilization of what is very, very desirable property.
Right. And I ask that just because the office market is certainly in a bit of flux. But it has bifurcated in some ways. Multitenant buildings very much seem out of favor. And for some reason, single-floor buildings have especially given some tenant desires to have a little bit more of, you know, paint them white, make them look like kind of a modern warehouse building, has been a strategy that seems to have, you know, gotten significant degree of traction in certain areas. But I also just wanted to kind of understand, you know, this is an area where we have a couple of RRC or other PVC developments. And just for context, RRC is always a little bit of a unique category in that it doesn't really specify density for multifamily. And, you know, we did ask at our prior working session to kind of look up what have been the units per acres, and, you know, for areas within a mile of this site, I think the max might have been 50, the low might have been 30, in the high 30s. And so, you know, very familiar with RAP product and multifamilies, designed to economize small sites by concentrating your parking within a clustered area. And I just, I'm trying to reconcile in my mind, an environment where there's kind of this open discretionary category of RRC when it comes to density, and the precedent is kind of densities that are half this.
Mm-hmm.
And it would be helpful for me to think about, if there's this much density, what does the other components look like, and how does the connectivity work, particularly on the ground floor level, to really make it truly like mixed use? Because in my mind, that's where I'm struggling a little bit with thinking about that level of density without a corresponding onsite, as opposed to kind of ancillary set of mixed uses. So I don't know if you have any things like ground floor elevations, if there are any kind of insight you might offer on whether there will be retail uses or onsite uses programmed on the ground floor? Can you talk to that a little bit, about how to put onsite programming outside of lobbies, pools, and like residence-specific amenity areas there will be?
Mm-hmm.
Just to help me understand that a little bit.
Sure. A couple of things, because you asked a couple of different questions through there, so I'll-
Yeah, I'll make them as confusing as possible.
It's okay.
Don't worry. I can unpack it individually.
I'll try to break it down. But first, as it relates to this property as a single occupant, you know, owner-occupied office space, number one, like I said, the building's economic shelf life is done. You would have to essentially tear it down to do something new. And building a single-story office on this, at this location, is a unbelievable underutilization of property that's in the Regional Activity Center on this. So I just want to respond to that, to where this property is.
Oh, yeah. And I'm not talking about building, I'm talking about adapting, reusing the structure that is there, but-
And then, as it relates to first-floor programming, what is planned here is programming for the residents. As far as injecting retail on the first floor or something to that nature directly across the street, once you, where you see UVC on your screen right now, is a very healthy first-tier-
Yep.
-retail restaurant with coffee, Chick-fil-A.
Yep.
It's got all of that.
Yep.
So from a market standpoint, if you were to try to have a first-floor retail presence here, who would you get? They're not going to be able to compete with those, they're off the main drag, and a single community is not going to be able to support that to any level of success. You just have dead space. And that's just, you're just not a way to pull that to that direction here. What you do have here, though, is it works the other way. You've got those same businesses that you continue to want to thrive, now you have residents there, the energy, the economic mass of residents there that can help continue to support that.
Yep.
The existing and future that's there. The mixed use is there. This just adds a better component of that mixed use.
Right. And just to kind of follow up on that, is there a plan to do this, have this be, is there any podium structures that will be incorporated into this? Well, this is-
A podium, yeah.
So strictly RAP, there's no-
No podium.
No podium contemplated in this?
That's correct.
Okay. So everything will be pretty much same level in terms of the height?
Right. It goes down, it's like a basement, but it comes up, yes.
Okay.
No podium.
Got it.
And if I could, just want to, you also asked one more question in there about density, and you're trying to kind of wrap your hand around that. I just want to respond further. Again, I think the density, if you're looking at it as on basis on the units per acre, absolutely what you said is true. You can't go around and find another multifamily market-rate community within one mile. And you can find student housing that's, that the RAP student housing that's in the area is same density as this, because it's the same dynamic at place. But you go to Cumberland, which is our only other Regional Activity Center, and that, to me, provides your example. Why does Town Center have to accept less than what Cumberland has to accept? Cumberland accepts high-end apartments, high-end multifamily units, where you have the covered structure, parking, and you have that type of luxury. Town Center can do the same, should do the same. That's where we would, as Regional Activity Centers, from a planning standpoint, it's our position, it's where we should do it, right there. And the density metric, to me, is what is the project? And what's being proposed is 285, which is, again, on the low end of the scale that you see for all these, no matter the acreage.
Yep.
That's, that's my response or offer for your consideration on that question.
Yeah, yeah. And I appreciate that, and certainly, there was one other question I think Commissioner Beloine had as well.
Go for it. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's just a follow-up on David's question to you. You answered by saying there were different types of projects that approached you. Can you tell us what other kind of projects express interest in coming here?
There was multifamily and student.
Do you remember any others?
Those are the two different ones.
That was it?
In addition to this, this one.
Okay.
We just had discussions. I just was answering his question. This goes back probably two years, but that's just personal experience. I don't know the actual answer, just was trying to qualify what I did know.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Before I let you go, I wanted to just ask you a couple of follow-ups. So is the market for apartments tied to this specific high-end apartment that you referenced, or is it for apartments generally in this area?
Both. The market generally is extremely strong, I mean, extremely strong, but there's also a donut hole, that there's, this is not in that area. But this market for this luxury segment is, their market study has shown it's there. There are people who want to be in this area. It's a vibrant, great area to be in. Either, maybe you work in the office that's across the street, maybe you work nearby, you want to be in this area. It's a, you know, maybe you're associated with KSU, whatever it is that brings you to this area, the ability to have higher-end, you know, multifamily living in the community is very desirable, and it's not offered in this town, in the Town Center Regional Activity Center.
Because there are other apartment complexes that have been approved and not yet built. How do we know that the market will remain steady on that?
Well, their market study takes, when they do the market study, it takes into account existing, and also shows the, what's going to be coming online, and whether there's enough room in the market for it.
And do we have the benefit of that study?
I mean, usually they don't let those markets, they're somewhat trade-secret type of, because there's their own formulas and so forth. But we can provide that information, we could provide some information to you to help you with that.
A high-level summary of that?
Sure. We'd be happy to.
Okay. And on the stormwater, because that was a question raised too?
Yes.
Can you explain where the drainage will go, if you know, or we can call an expert?
Yes, Carl, and we've done an extensive stormwater study already.
Uh-huh.
And, you know, our engineer has done that and provided that. I would either butcher it, as I'm not, I can speak to it sometimes, but if Carl's, Mr. Carvers wants to speak to that, I would defer to him or to our project engineer, Mr. Chris Harrell, who's also here, who can answer it, either one.
Okay. And maybe we could take both?
That's fine. Since they're here, I don't want to butcher it all up.
Right. We wouldn't want you to do that.
Thank you.
So the view from the expressway, what's that going to look like?
From the off-ramp or the expressway? Because from the expressway, you really won't see it.
You won't see it traveling?
But the off-ramp, you will, as you come off.
You'll see it from the off-ramp, but it won't be visible traveling north and south?
Not really.
Okay.
Because if you, if you see the aerial that's on your screen now, the off-ramp is what you see just to the right, and you can see the big area of trees in between and all of that. I mean, so you're far enough away, and there's a lot of blocks. You really don't, won't be seeing too much of this from the freeway, but you will coming off the off-ramp.
Okay. How about noise mitigation? Because I don't live very far from here, but trees don't help.
I, you know, I'm sure from Newport's standpoint, they provide certain noise mitigation by example. If you go down to the Cobb Energy Center today, you know, on 75, not on an off-ramp, on 75, if you go directly across the street, there's the Synovus Office Building, and then right next to it is a Newport multifamily community that was done, that's literally on the interstate on 75, for 14 lanes or whatever of traffic that's coming, and it's been highly successful since day one. So Newport knows what it's doing in that regard.
They already have their solutions, is what you're saying.
They, yes. They ensure that.
Okay. So can we hear from your stormwater expert?
Yes, that would be great. He's got a bum leg, but he'll wheel up here and give us an answer.
I can relate. Look at that, he can move better than I can. He was just looking for that ride.
So I appreciate you, your time. I'm Chris.
I'm Chris Harrell, I'm with Summit Engineering. And, yes, ma'am, the good news on the storm, there's good news on the stormwater for this site. Just to give you a big overview, the site actually flows toward the ramp. And then, there's a ditch that runs north along the ramp on, for about 1,300 feet. All these, all these kind of flow back toward that ditch. It ultimately crosses under 575 and goes toward West Chastain or Upper Chastain Lake. There's two little lakes right there on the other side of 575. So this site's three and a half acres. The stream that goes under 575 has a drainage basin of about 335 acres. So total site area is about 1% of the drainage basin, once it goes under 575. The better news, really, is that you have an existing site here that has about two acres of impervious surface on it. There is a little puddle of a detention pond that has about 10,000 cubic feet of storage in it. Of course, was built in the, whatever, 80s, 90s, and not built to today's standards. So really, it provides very, it provides no water quality. It provides no retention of rainfall. It may provide some little bit of detention, but very little. The proposal adds four tenths of an acre of impervious surface. We're talking about a third of a football field here. So in the greater scheme of things, we're only adding a little bit of impervious surface. But what we're providing is a stormwater management system that consists of underground pipes and gravel around the pipes, and infiltration into the soil. And that system has about 36,000 cubic feet. So it's over three and a half times the size of the existing one that's out there. And of course, it'll, we're not asking for any relief from Cobb standards or the state standards that are actually new as of this January. So even, even better. So, so our system will actually infiltrate the first runoff from the first rainfall, and then it will meter and definitely mitigate the discharge. Also, the study that we will do will pretend as if this site were never developed. So when we discharge stormwater, what does get discharged will be at a rate as if this was wooded. So we're not going to assume it's already developed and say, well, we can discharge that much. We're going to go all the way back to when the Cherokee were here. And, and whatever the wooded cover was on that, then we're going, that's what, that's what stormwater will leave this site. So it'll, it'll actually be an improvement over what's there today. Now, as far as the folks at the Chastain Lake, you know, good news and bad news, the, the good news is we're, we're, you know, really going to improve what's leaving this site. You know, bad news, it's not really going to make much difference. It's such a, it's such a minuscule part of that drainage basin. But, you know, I guess if you could get everybody to redevelop, then it would really, it would really help them. But this is such a small site that by the time it crosses over the interstate, it's such a small percentage that no matter what we do, it won't, it won't, it won't help much, but it'll help a little bit.
So, I mean, because you heard the residents express, you heard, you heard the residential concern about downstream impacts. Is that, is that what?
Well, certainly doesn't impact the townhomes.
Right.
The, the water goes the other direction.
Okay. And so it's at Chastain Lake?
I don't, I don't know what concerns there would be. I heard there might be some, and so we looked at this pretty hard.
Okay.
And there's no residential impact until you cross 575.
Okay.
It's all office and commercial development to the north. The creek crosses underneath.
Is information on, on that impact on the other side of the expressway available to those residents?
It certainly can be. And of course, we will, we'll have a hydrology study, that's a complete hydrology study. I've done a very preliminary analysis that says everything I just told you. And I've just given it to Carl this morning, but it's really straightforward. It's pretty straightforward.
Okay. I know there are pre-existing concerns in that area, and I think it would be very beneficial for them to have that information.
Oh, sure.
Okay. Okay. Any further questions?
You have one? Okay.
You can scoot away.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
Carl, can we get you? That's quite a feat there.
Carl Carver, Cobb County Stormwater.
Thank you. So you, you've, you've just heard what Mr. Harrell said. Are you in agreement with that? Are there any things that you would like to add or denote?
I, I am in full agreement with it. He is correct, and what he presented to me this morning pretty much follows our code, including, it sounds like he's going to have good infiltration, so he'll be able to reduce the runoff coming from this site. So I think the, what he's proposing so far looks good. Of course, with land disturbance permit, he'll have to have all the details and the calculations with that.
And the, the lakes that he's referencing on the other side of the highway, are you familiar with the issues at those lakes?
We did, we did not discuss those at this time. It was not an original requirement of mine to do any kind of sediment study downstream, because originally, before I got what I got today, I was beginning to think that it drained to the next commercial site, which went through another detention pond. And then I didn't know where it went. So we don't have the, all the infrastructure on private systems in our GIS. So it's, until I get survey information from the applicants, then I don't know which way it's really going.
Okay. Would you be available for discussions with residents who might be impacted?
Sure.
Okay. Any further questions for Carl? Does anybody have anybody else they'd like to call?
Jeannie, I guess it is today. Yeah, can you just go ahead and comment on densities? We'd asked John Peterson to provide this information. Can you, since he's not here, can you comment on densities of other apartment projects in the area?
Yes, he was able to provide five different densities in the area. I don't know how you want me to list them, but Z-73 of 2013 is Hidden Forest Court. It's zoned PVC for 1,600 apartment units on 50.237 acres for a density of 31.84 units per acre. Z-54 of 2017, at 3061 Busby Parkway, was zoned RRC for 215 apartment units on 3.97 acres with a density of 54.15 units per acre. Z-5 of 2020 at 3550 Busby Parkway was zoned PVC for 342 student housing apartment units on 13.42 acres with a density of 39.6 units per acre. And then, C-68 of 2020 at 2650 Cobb Place Lane was zoned RRC for 347 apartment units on 7.7 acres, resulting in a density of 44.5 units per acre. And finally, Z-70 of 2021 at 2795 Town Center Drive was zoned RRC for 375 apartments on 17.89 acres with a density of 20.96 units per acre.
Thank you. It's almost like that was planned. Thank you.
It came off the top of her head, didn't it?
Had the email.
And as a follow-up, could I ask, Jeannie, for the student housing one, can you, I know there's a calculation where basically you count the number based on like a half. Was that number that you mentioned an adjusted density? Or was it a, just strictly, here's the number of units, here's the number of acres, pre-earney adjustment?
I'm not sure off the top of my head. Student housing is kind of like per bedroom?
Yeah, right.
So I can look up that case and maybe get you an answer here in a minute.
Okay. I just want to make sure it's apple-apples, since those do lease per bed, they, they do have a, kind of a divisor that's applied to them. Okay, thank you.
Did anybody want to speak with anyone else? Okay. At this time, then, I'd, I'd like to move to hold Z-52 until our next meeting. And with awaiting the traffic study information and allowing any common opportunity for the exchange of information with interested parties, either on traffic and stormwater in particular, and to encourage folks to have open conversations with one another about the impacts of this on the community, and to bring forward any information that might be a benefit to us making our future decision.
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Beloine. Is there, is there a discussion? I'm sorry. Not called a question. Okay. Five to zero, approve to hold Z-52 to the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next case is the case that was pulled off of consent, Z-53, Learsey Development Partners LLC, requesting a rezoning from GC to R15 for a single-family residence on landlot 1297 of the 19th District. It's located on the northwest side of Old Bankhead Highway at the terminus of Ricky Lane, south of Veterans Memorial Highway. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here in opposition to case Z-53?
Yeah.
Yeah, there is one. There's one.
We have one?
Yeah.
Let the record show there's one person opposed. And all those who wish to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having us. My name is Leroy Lovelace with the applause group.
And I'm Shavsha Israel Lovelace with Learsey Development. Can we start? Okay. So what you see on the screen there is both lots 1090 to the left and 1080 to the right. And prior to purchasing these two lots, I have developed or renovated or reconstructed homes within Mableton Cobb County area due to drugs and crack houses and different things like that, kind of cleaning up the community for investors and business partners of mine. And so, coming upon these two lots, 1080 had a pre-existing home on it back in 2020 and 2021, pretty much up until 2021. And I used to shoo the drug guys off and, off the lot and stuff like that, and tell them to go away. And the owner of it at the time, in 2021, he started to tear it down. And I said, hey, I'm a contractor, I want to fix this house up for you. But he was like, oh, I'm getting rid of it. Fast forward 2022, he decided to sell it. He sold it to us, and then I bought the lot next to it, which is also 1090. And in doing this, I want to, it's basically to clean up the community, because right across the street, if you see the RA5, that was Habitat for Humanity, and there's children that go to school in that area over there. And I remember a couple of the parents, when they saw me shooing away the people, they were like, thank you so much, because, you know, we're scared to kind of go over there to talk to those guys. So that's pretty much kind of what I want to do for the community, is put two nice houses on the lots.
So, excuse me, so we made out over 100 notices to the surrounding, to the surrounding neighbors within 1,000 feet. I've got two, two return calls, both of them were in support of rebuilding or building on the lots. I've got one call that had a concern about the existing garages on the property. So we're very aware that there's a huge development going on in the back of this, back of these lots. Like Shavsha said, these lots did have previous homes there, so all utilities are in place. We met with the planning commissioner earlier, and they pretty much understand that the existing homes have everything that we need in order to develop the homes that we want to put on the properties. Oh, and one of the other concerns was when they tore them, the house at 1080, they left the garage in the back. So I do plan to renovate that garage to make it match the new, the new building, the new property, which would be the top building, the top, top drawing.
And so if you look at the drawing, the drawing that he picked, the, the home that he chose, it just so happens that the garage or what have you is on the opposite side of the driveway. So when the drawings are completed and done, it'll be on the same side as the current driveway. And then the home that I chose, which is on the bottom for 1090, that is actually, that little section on the left-hand side, that's actually the garage. So it comes in from off of the same side as well to, as the current driveway that's there. And then, prior to, like I was saying, prior to that, there was homes that I had made nice for the community. One was 5624 Whispering Pines, 4938 White Boulevard, and 4942 White Boulevard, which were also, like I said, crack and meth houses that I took under contract and fixed up for, for other people. Oh, and I'm sorry.
No, you still got time. Go, go for it.
And I'm sorry if I didn't give you the drawings, but we were, we weren't sure if we were going to get approved or denied. So to spend three or four grand on two sets of drawings, which would be like 6,000 or 8,000, and then be told that we couldn't do residential, I was like, well, let's kind of wait on that. And so that's why we tried to present you with at least some kind of drawings to let you know, I think the top one is a little over 2,000 square feet, and the bottom one is a little over 2,200 square feet for the lots. So, yeah, so that's the only reason why we don't have the drawings with the elevations and different things like that.
Anything else you want to present?
Good.
Okay. Y'all can have a seat, and then we'll hear from the opposition, and then we'll call you back up for questions.
My name is Robin Meyer. I'm the chair of the zoning committee for the Mableton Improvement Coalition. And it's our recommendation that you recommend approval of this application with, with just a couple of conditions. And that was really the reason I raised my hand in opposition, was just to make sure that we can tidy up just a few loose ends. It was great to see the two images of the homes projected, and I hope that they will become part of, of the conditions of any approval that, that you would recommend. And also, the applicants provided us with a site plan that, if we could show it real quickly, is also our understanding of where the, of where the homes are going to go on the lots. I'm not certain exactly the logistics of doing this, but if your, if your recommendation for approval could include the site plan as well, as well as documenting the, the desire of the applicants to repair and match the existing garage to, or the outbuilding to the house at the top of the screen, the lot at the top of the screen. So this shows the positioning of the house on both the lots, and we think that's an important thing to go in the record. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, this is District Four as well, so I'll turn it to Commissioner Hughes to lead the discussion.
Thank you, Chairman. If I could just ask staff, what's, what is staff's recommendation with respect to this application?
I wasn't ready with that either.
No, I'm sorry. That's right, it was on consent. You're right, never mind. Never mind. That's right, it was on consent.
Staff recommended approval, subject to the district commissioner having final approval of the site plan, fire, water, stormwater, DOT comments and recommendations.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate that. And let me just say to the applicant, thank you for your patience today. We ended up having you until almost 3 o'clock. And really, the reason was just to make sure that we got on the record some of the materials that you shared with respect to the elevations, as well as the site plan. I don't really have any questions, other than just to state that that was my main focus, was to make sure that the site plan, as presented today, as well as the elevations, were provided. And we also wanted to confirm what was going to happen to the existing garage or shed that was on the site, and confirm that that was going to be renovated. Now we know that it's going to be renovated and will match, at least architecturally, the main, the primary residence that's on that site. Is that correct? Okay. Yes, you can, if you want to come up.
And I did want to say something about, if you can pull up the site plan. I think I gave you one. So the 1080 on the right, the drawing is not necessarily, I mean, it's going to be a little bit over more towards the driveway, if that's kept as a garage, or it'll stay kind of where it is if it's a office, because of that structure that's in the back. So that's where we're trying to make that decision on. Do we want two garages, or do we want that to be, you know, stay a shed and then a garage attached to the home? Okay, so I just wanted to clear that up.
And just generally, what are some of the exterior materials that you plan to use for the structures, exterior materials?
Exterior?
Yeah.
Hardy plank?
Okay.
Yes.
And price points, I'm just generally speaking?
So I'm glad you asked that question. So I have a current lot around the corner on Roy, that I'm going to be breaking ground with, and that price point is going to be at 450. And then the house that I worked on, on Whispering Pines, the house directly next to it, also sold for 420. So I'm looking in between maybe the 425 to the 475 ballpark area. It may be a little higher, it depends.
I don't have any other questions of the applicant. My commissioners, Commissioner Belong.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Just briefly, are you intending at all to try to use the current building in the back right as a second residence?
No.
After the sale? Okay, thank you.
No.
Commissioner Anderson.
I wouldn't even want to stand that.
Just one question. So, and is the intention to keep these as actual true for-sale properties?
Yes.
Okay, so not to be rented out?
No, I don't think so.
No, no, for sale.
Strictly for sale, okay, great, thank you.
All right, if there are no other comments from my fellow commissioners, I'm prepared to offer a recommendation to approve Z-53 as presented, provided the site plan that was shared with us today is made part of the public record for this case. In addition to that, including the referencing that the site plan, the elevation, excuse me, will also be incorporated into the record for this approval, and with the understanding that the shed or garages on the site will be renovated to match the architectural style of the primary residence that's on that site.
Yes.
And I'd like to also request that we add this back to the consent agenda for the board of commissioners. And that the district commissioner have the, the district commissioner have the final approval of the site plan.
On our next hearing?
Well, that'll be one of the conditions.
Right.
And so when you're ready to submit your site plan, she'll have final approval.
Perfect.
Yes, thank you.
And that is my motion.
Second.
Okay, I have a second from Commissioner Dance. Any discussion? None, let's call the question. A vote of five to zero, that's, we recommend approval for Z-53. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Make sure that you come back in two weeks for the board of commissioners' hearing as well.
You said what?
Make sure you come back in two weeks for the board of commissioners' hearing as well. Thank you. All right, the final case is temporary land use permit, LUP 13, Carol J. Hicks, Vargas and Michael Vargas, requesting a temporary land use permit to allow more adults and vehicles than the code allows, in Land Lot 80 of the 16th District, located on the southwest side of Rocky Top Court, north of Watkins Glen Drive. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is not present. Is there anyone here in opposition? There's no one here in opposition. I'll turn it over to the board.
Thank you. No one to hear from. This is in District Three, so I'll turn it over to Commissioner Dance.
At this time, I would make a motion to disapprove, LUP 13.
Second. We have a second from Commissioner Hughes. Any discussion on this? To deny? Yeah. We'll amend to say deny, but any discussion? Okay, let's call the question. A vote of five to zero to deny LUP 13. Thank you. Finally, we have just more for informational purpose or to be entered into the record. Our intent to do a rescension on case Z-43 in District Two. Per the planning commission and the board of commissioners, only hearing procedures to July approval action by the PC and the BLC for rezoning case Z-43 shall be rescinded at the August 2nd hearing and the August 16th BLC hearing. And that case is going to be put on hold to allow for proper notification mailings and proper signposting. This case will be reheard by the PC on September 6, 2022, which is our next meeting, and then by the BLC on September 20, 2022.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that's fine, as long as it's placed in notice on the record.
Thank you. All right, we have two orders of business to get through. Approval of some minutes first. The minutes of the zoning hearing held July 5, 2022. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the minute.
So moved.
That was seconded by Commissioner Anderson, I mean, moved by Commissioner Anderson. Who? They'll have a second, second. It's been a long day. Second by Commissioner Hughes. Let's call the question. Those minutes are approved by a vote of five to zero. Next, we have the minutes of the special court meeting, the agenda review work session from July 25. Motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. Let's call the question. Those minutes also approved by a vote of five to zero. With that, if there's no other business, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.